Thank you very much, Richard. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of the full council, this December meeting. I'm going to read out to you how the meeting will be conducted. I know that members and officers are more familiar with this system now, this remote working, but there may be people watching for the first time. So just to ensure that everybody knows exactly what's happening, as I said, it's been held fully remotely and in accordance with the temporary legislation changes that allow the council to continue to operate in an open and transparent way. Decisions made at today's meeting are just as applicable as in a traditional meeting setting, provided the number of members in attendance ensures the meeting remains quiet. I'd like to remind members that this meeting is still being live streamed to the public. And can I request that you all switch off your cameras and mute your microphones when you are not speaking, and also ensure that you have your chat bar open for voting purposes? A request to raise a point of order can be written into the chat bar. Moving in seconding items, there will be a raised hand facility for each agenda item in the chat bar. Please ensure you locate the correct one for that particular agenda item. Also for voting, this will be carried out by using a vote facility in the chat bar. Again, there'll be a different one placed there for each agenda item. Sadly, once again, at this point, I would like to ask you to observe a period of silence for all who have passed away. Last met, and remembering today, former chairman's consort, Mr Graham White. Sue White was chairman to this council in 2008/9, and we offer our condolences to Sue and her family and to all who have been bereaved. Thank you, members. Can I now ask Reverend Counsel Bob Greenan to conduct prayers for us?
And now, as we begin to prepare for the business of the day, let us first come before God with those things that trouble us, with those things for which we're grateful, and to give our thanks. Heavenly Father, we remember all the residents of our county who have lost their lives recently, particularly remembering Graham White and remembering with him Sue, particularly those who have succumbed to the coronavirus, and we ask for your comfort on those who mourn. We bring before you all in hospitals, care homes, and those in their own homes needing care. And we pray for all who care for the sick, including family and other voluntary carers. In all the misery of this period, we have seen some of the best in people who have reached out to those in trouble and difficulties. We give thanks for the incredible work of those at Monmouthshire County Council who continue to offer vital services in this pandemic. As winter progresses, we pray for the homeless. Officers of the council have worked tirelessly in difficult circumstances this year to ensure no one need be sleeping outdoors. May there continue to be support for the homeless and the lonely who suffer so much, and may solutions continue to open up for their ongoing care and support. As we approach the Christmas season, we know that as a result of the repercussions from the restrictions we face, many more families face a bleak future. We pray for children in care of this council, and we give thanks for the efforts of social services staff who are organising an appeal so that there will be some cheer for those families and children in such desperate need this year. Father, as we wait in anticipation to welcome into the world your son, our saviour, may the joy of that new birth radiate across our nation as we now, with the new vaccines coming on stream, can confidently look forward to a brighter new year. Loving God of all your children, may your light shine in all our lives and give strength to us in all your work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Father Bob. We're now going to move on to the agenda, and before we do, I would just like to request that members try not to be too repetitive in this meeting. We do have a long, important agenda, so please, as I have mentioned at previous meetings, you can agree with what's been said if things have previously been said by members, please express your views that you agree with them, but we don't want a lot of repetition. It does creep in, and it is a little bit more difficult to have, you know, how can I say, meetings conducted in a timely manner. So if you could all please bear that in mind. Thank you. Right. Do we have any apologies for absence? Counsel Watkins.
Thank you. Can I give apologies from Counselor Jez Becker? He's got IT problems at the moment. He's hoping to join in later on, but it depends on IT.
Thank you. Counselor Batruni.
Counselors Martin Grokot and Counselor Dave Evans.
Thank you. And I understand Counselor Easton may be a little bit late, but he is going to be joining us. Counsel Howes.
Well, thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, Chair. May I give apologies for Frances Taylor? She is in another meeting, and she will be joining us as quickly as possible. And Counselor Smith is just having IT problems, but she'll come on board as quickly as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I'm not aware of any for the Conservative group, but I myself will have to leave the meeting at three o'clock for another meeting, so I apologise for that. But I'm not sure whether anybody else has any apologies on behalf of the Conservative group.
Wait a moment, see if any comes up in the chat bar.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think Giles Howard might struggle to be with us today.
Thank you. Right. So the next item on the agenda, declarations of interest. These can be declared now, I can invite you to speak now, or as we proceed through the agenda. If you do wish to speak and declare an interest, please make it known in the chat bar, and I will invite you to speak as we proceed. Public questions, there have been no public questions received. Chairman's announcement, no petitions, but I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all our Monmouthshire team, officers, staff, members and volunteers for their continued commitment in looking after the good people of this county and beyond. The many months of going above and beyond to ensure services are provided, and the ability to adapt, and adapt very quickly to different ways of working have been outstanding. Our statistics show this display of professionalism has made Monmouthshire one of the safest places to live and work. And the recent good news about the vaccinations give us all hope for the future. However, we must all continue to keep safe. Thank you. So first of our reports this afternoon is the Social Care Safeguarding and Health Annual Director's Performance Report for 2019/20. So I'm going to invite Chief Officer Julie Bothroyd to present the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Really pleased to be here delivering my second annual statutory director's report. And it feels a little odd that I'm sat in the council chamber all on my own, whereas last year you were all here in when I delivered my first report. So I'm really pleased to be here. Members will have seen the report again in the format of a SWAY, as we did last year. Hopefully, people have had a chance to delve in and get into some of the detail within that report. What I propose to do is to share my screen and actually run through and highlight some of the areas that I'd like to focus on this afternoon. I will also, and I hope that the technology works, I'm hoping to show some of the excerpts of films that are embedded within the SWAY. And I think it's worth just saying that because we take an inclusive approach to the way that this report is pulled together, and now that it's got a little bit more momentum in the few years that I've been the director, it becomes quite a tricky choice to choose what is going to make the cut. Now, that's a luxury, as far as I'm concerned, because actually it means that people are getting behind making sure that the stories are told and that we've got that rich evidence that we are required to deliver against the six standards that are within the SWAY. As I go through them, I'll explain that. But what I will do is I am going to, I'm not going to show all of them because we wouldn't have time, and some of them are a little bit long, so I'm going to edit. So I'm going to start playing some of them, give a little flavour, and then I will stop that and go back to the body of the report. Obviously, I'm hoping that the question's at the end, and I'm going to kick off by sharing my screen now and starting. There we are. So I'm assuming that I've disappeared, and now you can see the SWAY report. Lovely. Okay. So every time I look at this picture, it gives me joy, and I'm sure that it probably has the similar reaction for yourselves. This is a gentleman who currently lives in Seven View Residential Home, one of our homes here in the county, and this picture was taken on the day that he was able to see his son for the first time following the first lockdown. His name is Trevor, and he was waiting for his son to visit, and I think it just captures the essence of what a lot of us have been living through this year. And I think it's also just worth saying that that gentleman did used to work at Chester Comprehensive School and was a teacher there for 40 years. And for me, it's a little bit like a virtuous circle. So he contributed to Monmouthshire in a massive way, educating young people for 40 years. He is now receiving support in a care home in Monmouthshire, and actually, a lot of the people that care for him now were taught by him. So I just think it's some sort of poetry in that in some ways. Okay, I am going to scroll through. I hope I'm not going to make you feel a bit dizzy. I hope it'll be okay. Again, just in terms of kicking off with, I suppose I'm going to do this at both ends, I can do it at the beginning and at the end. Madam Chair, you referenced the steps that our staff have taken, how they have stepped up and gone above and beyond every day. I think that is very much in evidence in social care and health, and whether you are an administrator, working behind the scenes and supporting people, whether you are a frontline care assistant, as in this picture in their glorious PPE, whether you are a manager in our, helping deliver to the frontline all the support that is required, whatever part you play in social care and health, I think the incredible effort that people have put in is just, it blows us away, I think, every single day. I would, sitting here normally, thanking staff for all the things that they do, for their dynamism, their creativity, all of that, but it's almost as if there are no further superlatives to sort of describe how much further people have gone. And I would want to break it down into two bits, really, in that in the first instance, when this pandemic caught us, in effect, all on the hop, the ability and the flexibility of people to adapt rapidly, I think, has stood us in great stead. People, I think, in the first wave of what we were dealing with, the adrenaline took over, I think it's fair to say, you know, we were, people were running on adrenaline, and I don't think any of us expected to be perhaps at this end of the year in the same place. But yet, I witnessed daily people still carrying on, tired and weary at times, but carrying on, continuing to hold that very high standard. And I think that picture is a lovely reminder, telling me that I've got bad network quality here, so hopefully you can still hear me. And I think also, the reason why in my foreword I am concentrating on the care home sector, obviously, social care and health is much, much broader than that, but in those initial months and still now, care homes have played a massive part in terms of keeping people safe, and specifically in Monmouthshire. Seven View and Mardi Park, where we have residents who live alongside the whole of the rest of our sector across Monmouthshire, there are 14 care homes in Monmouthshire in the independent sector, have done an amazing job in keeping people safe. We have supported and networked across that whole sector, shared good practice, and really helped support the sector to keep strong. We have, in those stacks that you can see to the side here, some of the feedback from families, I'm not going to go through all of them, but when I asked for some contribution towards the report this year, these were the comments that family members, quite happily, if you like, put in. I think you are angels, as on the poster. Somebody actually suspended that in the garden without anybody knowing, and the staff came into work one day and noticed that there was this lovely banner, which I think is a lovely tribute to their efforts. And then the staff feedback, I think this one in particular, you know, I'm proud when people ask me, and I can tell them that we haven't had any cases, the reason I think we haven't is because, and it goes on to actually explain, that they have taken themselves, you know, sorry, taken their jobs very, very seriously. So I make no excuse for, in a sense, resting there a little bit and praising what has gone on in the name of our staff over this time period. And I'm not going to show the film that I showed last year, but I have left it in there, which is this film here, which is very much about the philosophy behind what we do as a social care and health department. And the reason I've left it in is because I think it provides the foundation for everything that we've managed to do this year, and I think it's set us in good stead to be able to be creative and flexible and adapt well, because the cultural conditions within the teams and within all the services that exist are framed with the person, the resident of Monmouthshire, in mind. So going on to the contents of the report, it's set out exactly as it was last year. This is a mandated template, it's not one that we've made up, we've just adapted it to fit into the SWAY. I'm going to run through my director's summary, and I will be picking out from a children's service and an adult service point of view, some of the key bits that I think members will be interested in, and also either present areas of pressure or areas of risk that I would want you to be aware of. I am then going to talk a little bit about how people shape our services, and then go into the six standard areas, which is where a lot of the data, a lot of the analysis, and a lot of the stories are. Now, I'm not going to be able to go through all six of those without taking you through till about eight o'clock tonight, so I'm going to just hopscotch through them and hope that you've had a chance to look at some of the detailed information that's contained within. A little bit about how we do what we do, so some of the governance arrangements that are in place, how we manage our money, and then a summary at the end. So that's the plan. Okay. So in terms of how do I know whether or not we're doing well, there are many, many things that I look at and my senior team look at. We use a variety of sources, as displayed through this report, really, so we do take very seriously information that comes in through complaints, compliments, representations. We run questionnaires, we look at our data and our dashboards that are in place across a range of our services, and importantly, we gather stories, real life examples about the impact that our work has on people's lives, and we take an approach to how we can learn from that. This is about always learning, it's about forward momentum, and it's about ensuring that we are delivering the best we can, and we continue to do that. As I mentioned at the beginning, it's a statutory requirement to, under the Social Services and Wellbeing Act, for an annual director's report to be compiled and obviously come through council. I've talked a little bit about the culture within which we deliver what I believe are very excellent services. And I think it's fair to say that the model that we have developed is very much that person-centred, very much about creating a relationship with people, and really placing high value on frontline practices. I think I did mention, I do this all the time, don't I, go backwards and forwards? The thing that I wanted to say about the reach that this report had last year, I think, is quite important. In taking this inclusive approach, you do take risks, like I said before, I've got lots of material, and I do have to do an edit, and we have to cut some things out, and not everything is wholly represented, but we have to prioritise somewhere. But again, last year, both through the social media platforms, through the Monmouthshire County Council website, and through Twitter, but this figure just relates to the Monmouthshire County Council website, that 1,550 times the last year's report was viewed, and I think that's very important, because to some extent, you know, this is a minority sport in lots of ways, and it may not have the reach that perhaps we want it to have, and we're going to try again this year, hopefully, following council's endorsement, to make sure that that does get out, and people can see the workings of social care and health. I will talk about the priorities that we set last year and the overarching themes that we use at a sort of high level to direct our work. We are obviously subject to inspection and regulation, and in May 2019, we had an inspection, and also we also have an annual letter from CIW following the monitoring that they do, both in the children's services and in adult services. And I just picked this particular court act that I thought was a good evidence, really, that a particular strength of Monmouthshire County Council is its commitment to develop a range of innovative and creative preventative services, and the ways of working with people in finding their own solutions, in preventing or delaying their need for statutory care and support. We saw evidence in our annual activity of an extensive range of preventative community-based services that support early intervention and good outcomes for people. So we were very pleased to have that comprehensive comment, and that actually refers both to children's and adults. So in terms of the broad themes, and last year, those broad themes remain, that they, you know, that sort of early intervention prevention, strengthening practice, delivering excellence in children's and adults, but specifically, we've had a focus on children, effective safeguarding, excellent care and support based on a relationship model, developing quality assurance mechanisms, ensuring we've got a good workforce, implementing requirements of the Regulation and Inspection Act, which I will talk about later, and developing partnership working across all sectors of pooling resources. So those remain. And then last year, at the end of the report, I put in a few next steps that we were going to progress, which are highlighted in bold here, and then the little bit of commentary about what we've done. So WCCIS is the All Wales Computer System that is being rolled out. I think it's currently in about 13 or 14 authorities, and we are progressing our work towards looking at integrating into that system. We have secured funding, and the timeframe could take up to 24 months to complete. We are currently in debate about which version of this product we move towards. We want to wait until it moves onto a cloud-based platform, and so that work is still ongoing. There was a next step around improving and building on workforce development and quality assurance, and in this year particularly, I mean, my report now refers to the year 1920, but what I have tried to do is actually given ASV's position as well, given that we were coming in a bit later than normal to present. Despite the difficulties we've had this year with COVID, over 200 courses have continued to be delivered, and the quality assurance mechanisms that assist us with our high-quality services, monitoring of those, we've been able to actually keep that going, and I will refer in more detail to that in chapter 1.3. Last year, we talked about, and it was evident in the figures, particularly around adult safeguarding, that we weren't able to meet the performance management targets that are set, and part of that was to do with the fact that the team has had been experiencing extreme amounts of pressure, and we undertook a review and looked at that and have been able to increase that resource. And actually, you will see later, that's been reflected in better performance, so we're very pleased that that's been able to. Implementing the key risk assessment and collaborative communication training in children, that has happened. I think, off the top of my head, it's 300 or so staff that have been trained in that approach now, and I personally, we are seeing some really different outcomes for children as a result of that, and I will talk about that later. Good news on the Crick Road site. Obviously, again, during the early phase of the pandemic, the work had to be paused, but we've picked it back up, and actually, the good news is that we're out to tender currently, so we're going to have, hopefully, be in a position, all things being considered, that there may be a spade in the ground towards the springtime next year. And then finally, and I'll be talking about this when I get into the children's section, the increase in the children looked after population. Obviously, this has been a concerning issue, and one that we are monitoring regularly. I do apologise, because I've been talking for so long, it now needs to refresh itself, and I'm going to have to log back in, so you'll just have to bear with me a second. And obviously, the children looked after issue is a highly politicised issue as well from a national perspective, and we are, you know, carrying out everything that we can to ensure that we bring our numbers down where we can, but safely managing the lives of children in that process. Okay, back to where we are. Right. So I'm going to move on to children's services, and I call these the scores on the doors. They are a headline of some of the performance metrics that are included in the rest of the report when we get into the evidence section, and it's also supplemented with some other information. So for example, the budget for children's services is 11.9 million, how many staff we employ, and the contact numbers of people that we've been in touch with this year. In terms of a summary for children's services, I find myself in a very, in a good position when I look at how things are progressing in children's services. Strong pro-progress is continuing to be made, and in terms of some of the reflections that we've been talking about as part of our senior team, you know, the fact that we are having different outcomes, both through the court process and through the dovetailing of early intervention, and the suite of service offers that we have to help people who are perhaps on the cusp of needing to be brought into a more formalised statutory provision. And we are really beginning to feel this year, of all years, actually, when you think about it, that we're beginning to hold that ground a lot more firmly, and that is very, very encouraging. And I put that down to the strong leadership and the leadership stability that has been developed in children's services, their ability to be able to recruit social workers in a market that is often difficult to recruit into, but we seem to be able to uphold that, which is great. And the two presentations that are here, which I'm not going to go into detail in, they chart that progress, that programme approach that's been taken in children's services from April 19 right through to next year, and it's separated into And it's separated into two sections and gives you a lot of the detail about how how that transformation is progressing. That importance that we have put into the training around the risk assessment and collaborative communication work is key here because it's all about having a very different relationship with families, us being able to understand the risk in a really comprehensive whole system way and then looking at what is the best intervention. And there's some excellent work that's going on at the moment. Again, a couple more slide decks. I won't, again, I won't go into these in detail, but they are really, particularly the wellbeing and family support one, gives you a really good step by step, sort of bird's eye view really of what goes into those interventions that I'm talking about. And I think they are excellent. And there's some brilliant feedback from families that are saying, what a difference it has made and how they feel more in control of their lives. And for me, that's obviously the most important thing. And actually, better outcomes for families, better outcomes for children. And hopefully, an opportunity for us to either level or reduce that looked after, that children looked after population. Again, another quote from the annual letter. And I think this, again, I will read it out because I think it's very powerful. So there's evidence of good progress being made in Building Strong Families Initiative, which is this early work that I'm referencing. As an example of our partnership approach is becoming more effective in delivering more proactive interventions to children and their families. Key to this has been the partnership working with the early years flying start and third sector organisations, with primary health personnel becoming increasingly involved. The Monmusha Early Health Panel includes representatives from a wide range of services, including primary and specialist mental health services, housing, youth services, substance and issues services, school based counselling service, sports and leisure services. The panel meets weekly and takes referral from multiple sources. The panel provides a multi-agency nod, no door approach to supporting families and actually was recently cited as good practice in the children's commissioner's work, which was great. I think that emphasis on early help, early intervention has been so key and it was good that CIW had recognised that as well. I've talked a little bit about children who are looked after. Just wanted to give you a little bit of, you know, what some of the success factors are for us in terms of us closing in on some of this work. So one of them is that if children who are supported by the families where the case is subsequently closed. So, you know, where we're in a situation to close something down after a period of intervention, that's clearly a marker of success. Children who are being supported by the Achieving Change Together team to remain at home. So these are the children who potentially are most at risk of potentially having to come into a statutory formal setting. And actually, the Achieving Change Together team, and if you look at the PowerPoint, you will see the intervention approaches that they take to really ensure that families are able to be strong and can continue to stay together in their own homes. Children who are unable to stop being looked after because of the support provided by families together. Again, another strand of the service arm that is able to ensure that families can keep together. And then obviously, children who are looked after, who then actually need, can actually come back from residential care into a foster care environment and receive the intervention of the MIST service, which is that service that is looking to really skill up our foster carers to provide this much more intensive support to young people. And again, I'm not going to go through them, even though I really want to. The Joyce story and Victoria and Andrew's story, I think, again, they speak to the depth and quality of the work that is going on in this area. Fostering, as always remains, is one of those service areas that remains very key for us in terms of growing our own, ensuring that Monmusha children stay with Monmusha families. And the work that goes into this, again, pulling in partners from our communications team and our dedicated staff in that area of children's services has seen this number grow, even though these are really hard miles. They haven't managed to grow the numbers. But we would always say that placement sufficiency does still remain a concern and that's reflected across the rest of Wales as well. There's a lovely film, which I'm not going to show you at the moment, but that film actually is a lovely example of the Foster Care Campaign, which ran towards the beginning of this year, 20 Reasons to Foster in 2020. And it was a lovely campaign that ran over a number of weeks. And you get a sense from that film what that's all about. So I'm going to go on to adult services. Again, scores on the doors. Just some of the information that is included within the remainder of the report as well. Again, adult services focus remains on transforming practice. This has been a theme and a thread and I don't think it'll ever go away. I think we'll always be talking about how we transform, how we move practice forward, how different things impact how we deliver. And this year is a very good example of how we have had to change, particularly in adult services, the services that we deliver. What I want to just focus on here is something called placed based working, which is a method by which we are looking to build on the transformation that has happened to date, but takes it further. So bringing together the range of agencies, a bit like in children's services in the early health and prevention area. In adults, this is well established. And I think the step that they're looking to take next is how much closer to communities can this service offer get by using part of the community to deliver that. What I am going to do now is to show you, it's about three minutes, I think, long. I might stop it just in terms of time. But I was going to show you an example of how place based working and integrating with a range of agencies has really helped during the pandemic. Well, it doesn't want to do that. Sorry about that, it doesn't seem to want to play. But I'm going to try and go back to.
Don't worry, Julie, we'll be patient, it does happen.
I'm trying.
The wonders of technology.
Because I'm sat here on my own. Oh, thank you, the lights have come on now, I can tell you.
I'll welcome councillor Easton while you're doing that because he's just joined us, he's put a message in. We're just using up too much of the bandwidth, I'm no expert, but that's what I'm told.
I think that's exactly what's happening. And now it's not letting me go back in, which is a challenge.
I've got it up on my Surface Pro, if that's any help, if you want to come and take that from me and use that, would that help?
I know, well, yeah, because it's just disappeared altogether now, which is a bit annoying, isn't it? Okay, I'm going to, shall I, I might just try one more time. The other thing I can do, rather than go back in, obviously people have it. I can remember it off the top of my head. So I'll just, if people are happy, I'm just quite happy, rather than take any more time. So I was in the adult services section, talking about place based working. As I mentioned earlier, getting closer to communities, integrating with a range of different partners and delivering more local into the different areas of Monmusha has been the real push from a adult services perspective. And it also links with the work that members will remember we have talked about before, which is turning the world upside down, which is this really cutting edge piece of work that's trying to get support into clusters of areas to deliver as local as possible to people. Now, during the pandemic, we've had to suspend some of that work. And in effect, it's going to get taken over, I think, by the place based working, which will see that local development happen. So we're very pleased that that's going to happen. Just in terms of care at home, which I know was the next section on the adults. This has been obviously an area of concern for us for some time. Our ability to recruit into this section, that sector, has been compromised for quite some time. And members will have heard conversations that we've had about the ability or inability to secure enough care in some of our areas in Monmusha and actually having that numbers of hours unplaced. We were anxious going into the pandemic. I mean, what happened as a result of that was that actually families rallied round and actually we saw a reduction in some of those hours for the first couple of months. And then when we hit about June time, demand went through the roof again for our domiciliary care work. And that's been a real challenge. But again, adaptability, flexibility, a team led by a couple of our service managers managed to pull together an offer, if you like, a sort of quick way to recruiting people and did a really effective campaign, making sure that we were marketing very, very well what we needed and where we needed that. And it's actually seen a bit of a revolution in the recruitment of staff into domiciliary care and our home care at home services here in Monmusha. In care at home in Monmusha, we are fully staffed and we overstaffed because we needed to manage the demand that we were having. We haven't been in that position for, I don't remember the last time we were in that position. So there's been some incredible positives that have come out as a result of this. And obviously, we all know the issues that are currently at play in retail sectors and hospitality sectors. So we are attracting people from those sectors, there's no two ways about that. And also the profile that social care has had during the pandemic means that people who perhaps in the past haven't wanted to consider that that vocation now are considering it. So in lots of ways, it's been a sort of happy marriage for us. And it's meant that we've been able to recruit successfully and continue to do that. Fair to say, we've had to develop a machine that does that in the background because obviously people are very, very busy doing all of the essential work in care at home. But that's actually proved to be very effective for us. It's been one of the upsides of the pandemic for us. And in the final section I was going to talk about in adult services was RISCER, which is the registration and inspection requirements under the Social Services and Wellbeing Act. I think it's fair to say that this is a very well regulated bit of our business. So be that the residential care homes and the domiciliary care sector. Our staff have to be registered now and later on in the report, I referenced the the effort that's gone in to get people registered in time and people into the right qualification levels in order to be registered or be able to demonstrate that they are progressing towards that. But the issue about regulation inspection, and particularly through this period, is that it is very intensive. Not all areas of our business are regulated to the same extent. And the way in which we approach that is very much in line with that relational approach, people taking the accountability for quality assurance at a local level. And we also have something called a responsible individual, who is, we have two responsible individuals who are statutorily responsible for the regulation and inspection of their services. So I just thought it was worth including that this year because it isn't something that we've necessarily majored on in the past. And so moving away from adults, oh, I think I've got something on adult safeguarding in there. I'm doing this all blind now, so adult safeguarding, it is included in some detail in the sections 3.1 to 3.6. But it's fair to say that the graph that people, if you put the screens in front of you, gives you a very interesting up and down picture and a particular downward spike in the middle of, I think it's April, May time, when the numbers really, really did drop away. And there was lots of anxiety that we all had about who's got eyes and ears on people and are we going to suddenly find that we are inundated with later, both in children's and adults? And actually, yes, the numbers have gone back up, but they haven't gone, you know, beyond where we would have expected them to perhaps be. So we've obviously been keeping a very close eye on that from an adult protection and child protection point of view. So how do we involve people in what we do? And I think there are a couple of areas that I just want to briefly mention. And then again, members will have had a chance to look at this. Is corporate parenting and reminding all of our elected members that you are corporate parents and you have a responsibility in this area. And a number of elected members sit as part of our corporate parenting panel, which is an excellent panel and I certainly get a lot from that when I go because obviously the main thing is that we do have young people, our care leavers, who support us with that. And for me, that's very important, that they are influencing the direction, the shape of what we do and how we do what we do. And we take a lot of information and they help direct a lot of that work from the children's services and corporate parenting perspectives. That's an excellent example. And then another example, I think, that I have put in there is the My Mate example. And again, if you get a chance, I was going to end with this, but I'm not going to be able to because it's playing up. There's a beautiful little film at the end, which has a lovely soundtrack to it, which I particularly liked, that's why I wanted to play it. But it gives you a really good example of despite the difficulties that we've had over the last seven or eight months. And some of the people that we support are, you know, the most vulnerable. So in this instance, it's a lot of people with learning disability and physical disability and perhaps on the autistic spectrum, who are branching out in different aspects of life. Some of these people are living on their own. And My Mate was this opportunity for them to get together in social groups, friendship groups, really progress their relationships. Obviously, that all stopped. But the work that the team have done to galvanise a community around the digital that we have is, it's fantastic. And it's really held that very large group of people now, because it extends across Wales, it's not just in Monmusha anymore. And I just think it's a really good example, again, of how people can shape and influence the direction of travel. Okay, because I can't see it and I know you've got it in front of you, I am not going to go through the 3.1 to 3.6 because I'm just thinking, I've been talking now for about 50 minutes or a bit less. I think that might take me another hour, if I'm honest. So I'm not going to do that. And I'm just going to try and summarize a few key points, if that's okay, and then move over to questions, if that's okay. So, high risks, some of the high risk issues for us at the moment. So care homes would be up there, domiciliary care, capacity and ability to deliver if things got more tricky in the community. Now, I would say even at a base level without COVID, we have been struggling. COVID has given us, you know, some good and some bad in this aspect because actually we have been able to recruit. But then we have COVID, which means that some of that gets taken out of our hands if people become unwell or people are socially isolated, like we've seen in lots of other sectors. So for me, I would still have domiciliary care as a risk factor for us in terms of our ability to continue delivering high quality care to people who need it. In terms of care homes, as we've said, I think I've covered that. And then I would add into that sufficiency of service offers for children who we do need to bring into a care setting. We don't have enough sufficiency. We are working on that collaboratively with others and we work on that daily here. But, you know, those are areas that are. But, you know, those are areas that are, those would be the bits that keep us awake at night, I think, if we were honest. In terms of the pressures, I think, and that is different to risk, I think, in some ways. Some of the pressures that exist at the moment are, we have a tired workforce, but we are putting everything we can in and around our workforce to support them well, to make sure that, you know, we are encouraging people to take time off, that we are doing everything within all of our powers to make sure that the people remain resilient and strong. I suppose other pressures would be at the moment, the whole infrastructure around hospitals and the impact that that is having on the delivery for us. So whether that's the new hospital coming online and having to adapt our service offer to receive and assist with discharge there. And also the other areas of health that are having to recalibrate as a result of that. So clearly, we get very involved in that and that is an area of some pressure for us. But to end on some positives, as I said in the beginning, amazing workforce, absolutely amazing. From all the way through, they're just incredible. And I am incredibly proud to lead an amazing staff group who just blow your mind away, really. I think that's fair to say. And I think what we have managed to put in over the years in Monmouthshire from a council perspective, to ensure that we train our staff well, that we have a learning and an open approach, has really stood us in good stead during these very difficult times that we're still living through. So I'll leave it there, if that's okay. And I do apologize for not being able to get all the way through, but we would be here till later, probably. And hopefully, I'll be licking on my bed somewhere.
Julie, this is Boothroyd, to be professional.
No, you tell me, Julie.
Thank you. But thank you so much for bringing us up to date with the current situation. Your report is excellent. You led us through it. And I'm sorry, technology let you down, but you did a fantastic job. I mean, anybody that goes through this report can see it's all there, the same as last year. It's very informative. It's very interesting. And, you know, as you've said before, you can dip in and out and you can look at different parts of it. And we appreciate having that available for people to look at. But the way you led us through it was brilliant. And we are so very grateful to say thank you to you and your team. It's too little, small words, but we do appreciate the ever-changing, challenging situation you're in and the way you're all pulling together and working so hard. And I thank you very, very much on behalf of Monmouthshire. I'm going to hand over now. We've got some people who want to ask questions. So we'll start off, we're going to go through members. I'll leave it to you when you want to start responding to some of the questions. So we'll go to, I'll ask councillor Petroni to start with, then councillor Powell and councillor Eason for there. I'll invite them to speak and ask questions. Let me know when you want to start responding. Thank you, councillor Petroni.
Thanks, Chair. And I declare a personal interest, although I'm not prejudicial, I don't think until Matt tells me off. My nan's in my care home controlled by Monmouthshire County Council. So I have personal experience of the great work you guys have done looking after my nan and the incredible hard work the staff have done. I've got nothing but praise. So thank you. I wanted to say that. Thank you very much and to your staff and to the team. I love the report. I know it's similar to last year, but you didn't use Microsoft Sway last year. You did. All right. Okay. That was my bad. But the interactive, the interactive element, I just love it. The cars you flick around, the videos, I think that really adds a qualitative element to it. And I just want to, I like that. I like stats. I'm a geek, but I like the story as well. So I just want to comment that that was a good thing of the report. Although as the leader opposition, I have to focus on maybe the less negatives. And I looked at the CIW letter and I went through that in depth and read it. And you mentioned one or two. We didn't mention all of the things highlighted in there around some of the negatives. So one of them is the domiciliary support, particularly in remote rural areas, given we are a rural county. And you said that we were struggling before COVID and we are struggling certainly during COVID, which is completely understandable. But even post-COVID, given our demographic, this is only going one way. And I don't know, I just would seek a further reassurance on that, given our aging demographic, given our rural nature. I think we might need to be more reassurance on that, definitely. And in relation to that, the letter highlighted about getting people out of hospital and back into their homes and that we're experiencing delays. Now, I've been on this council, I don't know, nearly 10 years, maybe a bit longer now. And this always seems to be a problem for us, getting people out of hospital into the homes where they want to be. Can you just give me a clarification? I know Newport, they've got intermediate care, where they're not ill enough to be in hospital, but they're not well enough to go home. Have we got that facility in Monmouthshire and is it adequate, given the pressures coming down the line? And the other thing was around, it highlighted that we don't adequately, well, it says we need to improve and strengthen how we record evidence and ensure that we are, you know, delivering quality of practice. So I'm reading the letter from another screen. And that it's not very clear how we adhere to legislation, policy or procedures, which is a bit of a worrying paragraph. And I want you to give me a bit of reassurance on that as well. And lastly, around carers and doing assessments. It seems that in many instances, they do very well, but sometimes outcomes are very service-led. I'm directly quoting now, with little or no exploration of wider personal outcomes. Is that again about another level of support from staff? I mean, have we got enough staff? Do they feel overpressured? Are they being rushed from one home to the next? I suspect it is. But again, just further clarification on that. And lastly, another future one, referrals around children and, you know, concerns we have about some children, some families. You mentioned there's been a leveling off, there was a spike and a leveling off, if I heard you correctly. Do you envisage another spike? Because the stuff I'm reading is that we will have another spike of unfortunately, children being referred because of the financial play-out of COVID, which will take months and years. Are you anticipating that and are we planning for that? Thank you, Chair.
Madam Chair, do you want me to answer? Yeah. Okay. Sorry, you were frozen. Shall I carry on?
Oh, I was inviting councillor Powell. Is she there?
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry, sorry. Sorry, Chair, and I'm having trouble getting my camera to behave. Never mind. It doesn't matter if you can't see me. Actually, what I really wanted to do, I saw in the chat line that councillor Penny Jones had proposed we endorse this report. And I wanted to second that, but at the same time, I wanted to say what a comprehensive report it was and how easy it is to follow your report. Sometimes you can get lost when things are so complicated. But I think that as a councillor, Monmouthshire are doing very well in this side of things. Luckily, even though I've got old, I don't need the help that you might have to give me one day. But I think it gives people confidence when they know that we've got such a good team in the council. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Eason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't see you to be on the screen. I'm on the screen now. Thank you for your report, Julie. It's quite comprehensive, quite a big readers if you're going to the sway. I want to go to 3.3 of your report, saying protecting the safe gallery people from abuse, neglect and harm. We've got a good system in place, I believe, to look after children and monitor them and make sure that they are looked after. But what is your policy really on adult safeguarding? Where does adult safeguarding begin? And I use the word end, but I use the word end as an ongoing end. What levels of intervention can you make to protect individuals who are in a position where they need protection from abuse, neglect or harm? Do you have an ultimate sanction to continue to protect individuals who put themselves in a position of abuse, neglect and harm? And how long would you feel it's important for yourselves as an adult team feel it's necessary to monitor and follow serious matters of adults who get themselves into abuse, neglect and harm? I think that's my question. I think it's quite comprehensive. They might want to talk to me about it later on, but I'd like an answer today.
Yeah, happy to give an answer. Madam Chair, can I answer the ones I've got so far? Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go in slightly different order. So first of all, councillor Powell, thank you very much for your comment. I will make sure that that is fed back to everybody. And I'm pleased that you were able to read it and it made sense because for me, that's very, very important. Because we want to make sure that as many people who perhaps are in receipt and using our services can also read this and think, I get what they're up to, which for me is a marker of success. So thank you for your comment. I'm going to work backwards because councillor Eason's on the screen. So lovely question. Thank you, councillor Eason. In terms of adult and children's safeguarding, we now have national, all Wales, procedures for childrens and adults. So the infrastructure that is in place, both at a local level and a regional level and a national level, all sits within a, if you like, a governance bubble that ensures that we've all got the right policies, policy and procedural framework that is transparent and across the whole of Wales, across childrens and adults. So in terms of intervention around adults, and this is an area where there is some difference potentially around children and adults. Adults, you know, we are adults. If we are capacious adults and we have capacity, we can make our own decisions about risk around the decisions that we make and that we take. And often, when we are working with people, adults, who are subject to abuse, sometimes they want there to be intervention and other times they don't. And it's when they don't that it can be really, really difficult and very difficult for the workforce who are trying to perhaps work with somebody to intervene. And I'm going to just give you an example, you know, a neutral example of financial abuse. Let's say that somebody is being financially abused, financially abused, and he's an older person who has capacity, full capacity. But let's say a family member is exploiting them of money and taking all their savings away, et cetera. We will become aware of that through whichever means that may be. We have that conversation with that person. That person could say, I want you to do nothing. Yet the person is going to continue potentially exploiting that person financially. What we have to do is ensure that our workforce are skilled and adept, continuing to have that conversation, providing support, enabling that person to potentially get to the position where they do want us to intervene and do something about that. When we come to physical abuse, part of the new legislation has changed and given us a different level of power, if you like, an hour under the act, which means that if we are, you know, and these, I forgot what they're called now, that these powers, the name of this power, it hasn't, I think it might have been used once in Wales because it's quite hard to use on the basis that we would be able to, in a sense, get into somebody's house and remove a perpetrator potentially. Now, that's at the real extreme end, where we're working most of the time in terms of our intervention. People we know or people who are referred to us. And people, often we have a relationship with people and we are trying to help them reduce the risk of harm that there may be in their lives. And like, the reason I mention it, because for me, it's like shades of grey. Sometimes it can be straightforward, other times it's not. One of the tricks for us is to remain involved and keep helping with that intervention around people. So I think often it may be that you're not aware that we're involved because it may not be evident, but often we are involved in lots of situations if it meets the criteria for us to be involved. I hope that answers a little bit. Councillor Eason?
To a degree. I'm more concerned about what you would do in a situation where you've got alcohol abuse, financial abuse, living in squalor, where the capacity you talk about is allegedly, yes, I got the capacity when you were in full well, you haven't got the capacity. You did mention towards the end that there is an ultimate sanction. And not what you want to go down that road of ultimate sanction, but to protect people from their own abuse, et cetera, it must be taken. And I'd be happy to discuss it with you in a different.
I think it would be a good discussion to take offline and understand a little bit more. Yes, definitely. More than happy to do that.
Otherwise, you get to points where you might begin to identify people. I'd rather do that.
No, more than happy to talk offline and also with some of our protection people.
I already am.
Just come in there. I think I was just about to suggest that. I think that would be an excellent idea.
You've illustrated the route you can take and you've also illustrated the problems you will have down that route. I can understand that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Eason.
Okay, I'll work through councillor Petroni's list of questions now. So I'm going to start with, thank you for saying that you enjoyed the report, councillor Eason and also councillor Petroni. And I'm glad that you enjoyed the qualitative element of it because that's very important to us. And reassurance on the recruitment angle and particular reference to the annual letter, which I'm, you know, obviously aware of in terms of our regulators are concerned. Because we feed them this information, when we feed to them that we have got particular pockets where we are struggling to recruit or our numbers of hours of care required outweigh the amount that we can put in. And that's why I mentioned it as part of a focus today, is it's something that we're going to always have to be on. Our demographic and the requirement to provide support to people in Monmouthshire is quite high. And when we compare with others across Gwent, so during the pandemic, for example, we have had pockets of time when we've had up to 800 hours that we've not been able to place. And that's quite high, you know, it is high. And other areas, other bigger areas than us, haven't had those issues. And we often refer to the fact, our demography from a employment point of view, our rurality and our ability to be able to get people to certain areas of our catchment means that it is difficult. And this has been an ever-present issue. But I think the reassurance I would want to give you is that we're on it like Sonic. I mean, we never, ever let up on this stuff. It's a bit like an equivalent with the foster caring campaign work that goes on. We have to work, I think, three times as hard as everybody else in Monmouthshire to recruit people. And so actually, throughout the pandemic, what has been helpful is having this team of people who are dedicated to this. And we have been really encouraged by the return that we've had from some of our adverts. You know, at times, at one point, we had 27 vacancies that needed to be filled and we were able to fill them within a couple of weeks. Each time we put out an advert, we were getting lots of people. Now, clearly, we are, you know, we have to scrutinize all that really well. We have to go through all the checks and balances. We've got to make sure it's the right people. And I recently had some feedback from the team who've been doing this. And it's become, they've become really adept at it and really efficient. And they are finding some really interesting people that are coming towards us. The other bit I'd add in is some of the work that we're doing around apprenticeships. We've taken full advantage of the opportunity to bring apprentices in and grow our own. Obviously, an apprentice is not necessarily a fully pledged pair of hands. They are there to support and supplement. But it's another way of encouraging people into our world, to get them a chance of understanding what it's about and potentially will lead them on to more full employment in our area. And in fact, in Seddon View, Sean Gardner, who's the manager there, has really embraced the apprenticeship approach. And they were having some difficulties with staffing and have done at times. It is a bit easier sometimes to recruit into care homes than it is into the community. And she's taken a really proactive approach to having apprentices and growing people. And actually, that example that she has developed is helping others feel confident to do that. So again, in some of our domiciliary care areas, they're going to, you know, at some level, begin to experiment, if you like, with that. level, begin to experiment, if you like, with that. So we, I would want to give the reassurance that we're on it, we try every, whichever way we can, because it's important that we have a quality workforce. And delayed transfers. So our numbers are not that bad, actually. I know 53 is quoted in my report this year, which takes us up to about February. So that's a higher number than normal. And one of the issues which relates to the issue I've just mentioned is that the majority of our delayed transfers of care are in our community hospitals. So we get people out of the emergency hospitals, if you like, and then they come in and often people that we know and have got, you know, very complicated, complex needs and need a period of rehabilitation in the community hospital. And then for whatever reason, we end up in a sort of stuck situation because lots of complexity happens. We've had a number of people, older people who are homeless. We've had a number of people who need big adaptations to their properties. So by default, their stays end up being very long and they get captured as a, what I call an artificial figure that gets captured. And yes, we have a range of services, intermediate care services, step up, step down services. We have rehabilitation, but again, because of the problems that we've had in our recruitment to our domiciliary care sector, our rehabilitation services are full because they've got nobody to pass on to, beginning to change. I mean, I could sit here and it's 15th time and it might be a different picture. So it's very, very dynamic, but we have a range of those services in place. You'll have heard me say before, the, as far as I'm concerned, the detox target measure is a blunt instrument that doesn't capture the nuance and the complexity of this issue. And it's too blunt an instrument to sort of say either we're good or we're not good. And carers assessments, I think was the other one. And this has always been an issue. When I say it's an issue, it's not an issue. We are really good at supporting informal carers in Monmashia. We have an amazing team who do loads of very diverse activities to try and identify carers in the first instance, because often people are caring and doing amazing, you know, looking after family members, but they don't raise up and say, I want support or I want to, you know, to, to receive your newsletter, et cetera, et cetera. So we have a database of information of people that we've got. And also not everybody wants a carers assessment. It's, again, it's one of those metrics that gets used. Yes, there's legislation around carers, it's very important. And then if people do have an assessment, they have a level of expectation that something's going to happen. And often there aren't the services or the, or the outcomes that they may want to achieve. We can't achieve for them. So again, it's one of those much more complicated nuanced issues that isn't as, isn't as easily described in a figure. But I would want to reassure you that we, we do really good work around informal carers and we have really good feedback. And yeah, I think... Oh, and then the other one, I think councillor Petruiny was the referrals, children services and the front, I'm going to separate this out. So front door activity, people coming towards us, numbers are very high. And we've been tracking that through, we track it always, but certainly through these months since the pandemic. And averagely, we are, run rate is around 60 referrals a week, average normal times. It's over 100 at the moment. And so the pressure on our, the front door of children's services has been immense. And they're doing an amazing job, but it's, it's really hot and really quite heavy. And what we have to understand though is that not all of that demand turns into a formal support or formal statutory provision, you know, in terms of children who are looked after. And the, the, the emphasis at the front door is to really try and work out where is the best place that this, the contact information that's coming in, where, where's our best intervention? And some of those early intervention services that I mentioned in the children's section bit are where some of that demand gets managed. And only a percentage of that will ever go on to be requiring that, that formal support. So I hope that that does answer your question councillor Petruiny.
Thank you. We move on. Now councillor Thomas and councillor Watts. Right, councillor Thomas, can I invite you to ask your questions please?
Okay, thank you Chair and thank you Julie for the very comprehensive report as already been said and obviously brought alive by straight. My main concern from sort of corporate parenting, I'm on the corporate parenting committee. And I can see, you know, the hard work that goes on, but one thing that concerns me, I don't know what, you know, exactly can be done about this, but is this during COVID, the lack of sort of direct physical visits? And when you look nationally, there's been a huge increase in domestic violence and also neglect of children. And obviously, if you look at the numbers of people being put out of work, you know, in all sorts of areas, but now in retail in particular, with big shops going 25,000 people out of work. One question would be, you know, are you confident that all safeguarding issues are being picked up, you know, albeit, albeit virtually? And especially when schools are out during the early part of the year, schools are, teachers are the, the eyes and ears of child services. And obviously, schools weren't running things like seeing children in P and seeing whether they had marks on their body, et cetera, or their general demeanor when, when they come into school. And the second area in terms of corporate pending, care leavers, I know they have support works, et cetera, but I have felt for them in a sense that many of them obviously living on their own and the support for them, but also in terms of housing. And you had something from Ian Bakerall the other day in CYP, difficulty finding, you know, single bed accommodation, et cetera, for young people and particularly men who obviously are down the housing sort of register. So, you know, those are the two areas, one not being able to have a physical meeting and also the issue about care leavers. Because although foster children in a difficult position, care leavers are in a sense much more on their own and it must have been incredibly challenging for them. Thanks, thanks Chair.
Thank you. And so Watts, would you like to invite you to ask your questions please?
Thank you Chair. Can you hear me all right? And so my question is about, Julie mentioned it, about the recognition, the, I guess the change in fortunes of the image of carers and domiciliary care is really in general. And I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of them, that, you know, tremendous job they've done in the private sector, which we've supported, which I know that we have, but also then obviously within Monmashia County Council. And you recognize that we have more people coming forward, people coming out of the retail sector or other different sectors coming in to look, for the first time becoming carers. And we would ultimately, I guess, support, train them up and then ensure that they're doing the job in the way that they should be. But with that in mind, we still suffer the stigma, I think, within that sector that is a particularly poorly paid job. So in the private sector, as you know, the Chancellor has very generously awarded the, those, those that are paid the minimum wage an extra 19p an hour for delivering that care. I wondered then in obviously the public sector, whether you thought that we were paying enough? So for example, you know, retail sector still pays more on an hourly basis than we do for the care within our homes. Do you think it's time that we change that and what do we intend doing about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to those questions? And I'll invite councillor Jones as a cabinet member to, as the last person to speak on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Thomas, thank you for your questions. And I, I too, like yourself, you know, sitting on corporate parenting panel and on other arenas and during this time being anxious, I suppose, about the social isolation of people. And particularly, like you say, care leavers, we get exposed as part of the corporate parenting panel to some of the quite painful stories, I think, about how, you know, if you're leaving the support of a foster carer at 18, whether you want to or not, and you have to, then having to set up your own home. And we often reflect on how, you know, those of us that have children, we're still supporting them into, you know, a 27 year old at home, you know, we're still supporting them for a long, long time. And suddenly our care leavers have to stand upon their own two feet and fend for themselves. And I would want, and I know that to do, councillor Thomas, you'd agree with me, I'd want to pay massive tribute to our support workers who do an incredible job in supporting the cohort of care leavers that we have. And the relationship and the bond that they've created with those individuals is the epitome of going above and beyond. It is just amazing what they do. And in terms of the ears and eyes on, as I call it, in, you know, that whole physical presence that we haven't been able to have with people, it's been an interesting one and we've reflected quite a bit on this. Yes, schools are a predominant place where people can be recognized and referred. But actually, even though the, the numbers dipped a bit, they didn't dip that much and they didn't then catapult forward when schools went back. And the, the sort of learned experience of the services that other eyes and ears were at play and communities came into play and communities referred. There's been a very interesting shape to some of the, the referrals that have come in. And I would also say that that's the same in adult world as well, that actually it almost feels as if when we mobilize that support around communities, particularly the shielded people, et cetera, et cetera, that community endeavor reached to everybody. And so actually, we've had some very interesting referrals that have come through. So, you know, I think it's changed our perception perhaps and our understanding of where our work comes from. So we haven't been as anxious about that as we were perhaps in early March. That hasn't, that hasn't actually manifested. So I think that's just been an interesting dynamic for us. The work on housing, I just wanted to pick up because this is an active stream of work. And as you know, through the corporate parenting panel as well councillor Thomas, we've been talking about this. And the service with housing are looking actively at a number of adaptations to existing premises or actually looking at, because what we found is that a lot of the children who leave our care don't necessarily want to come back to Monmashia or be in Monmashia. They want to be nearer an urban conurbation, be that Newport, be that Bristol. So we're having to think very, very creatively about where and what housing stock support we would look to grow into. And that's a very, very active dialogue and piece of work that's going on at the moment. Moving on to councillor Watts's question, bottom line is no, they're not paid enough. They haven't been paid enough for a long time. And that's an issue that we are championing. It is an issue that we regularly raise from a, I'm just talking now from an association of directors of social services point of view, that actually if we want a sector that is more buoyant, that has much more visibility in terms of a vocational wonderful world to be in, it needs to be recognized more. And so I'm happy that we've had recognition during this pandemic period, but it does need to be followed up with a sea change in terms of how people are recompensed and what requirements we require for people to potentially be registered, registered and, and what qualification level we will require into the sector. It needs to be modernized, definitely. And that would then complement, I think, a lot of what we're doing around the recruitment work. So yes, we champion that cause at every opportunity.
Thank you. Going to move on now to councillor Penny Jones, just for anybody watching live stream. There was a, she has actually asked in the chat bar for this to be endorsed by full council. She's proposed that this report is endorsed by full council and councillor Powell has previously indicated that she wishes to second that. So I'd now like to invite councillor Penny Jones to speak.
Thank you Chair. Thank you. And thank you Julie for the annual statutory director's performance report for 1920, despite the glitches. And what a memory you have. I couldn't have done that. And it was as promised, an interactive report which included contributions from both workforce and the service users, which I think is so important, straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, to use an analogy. And it just demonstrated that the whole team generally provide excellent, cutting edge, innovative practices which help make a difference to our residents in need, the residents in need throughout Monmashia. And that is at the heart of everything we do. And I think that was demonstrated throughout your report. And throughout the pandemic, Julie and the whole team covering children's services, adult services, safeguarding and all the allied services have worked above and beyond the call of duty. We're still not out of the woods and the long-term implications are causing concern throughout. But with the can do attitude that's been demonstrated of the whole team, of a committed and passionate team that you have, I think we will get through this. So on behalf of all the council members, I'm sure, I'd just like to offer sincere thanks to everybody involved in the social services team throughout. So thank you Julie.
Thank you councillor Jones. I'm just going to ask for the voting app to be put in the chat bar now and we will go to the vote to ask members to vote on endorsing this report. It's there. Oh yes, it's there. Oh, that was quick, that was good. Right, members, if you'd like to vote now please. How many are we today? We needed 19 for this to be carried. We've got 27. I'm just wasting a little bit longer because we do have a few more members in the meeting than that, but it does take a while sometimes for all trying to vote together, but to record it. 31. Thank you, members. That is a clear majority that the council endorses this report. And once again, many thanks to Julie Boothroyd and her team and Phil, he's given us such wonderful answers to all the questions. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right, thank you, members. The next item we have on the agenda is the corporate joint committee, oops, I turned my camera off. You don't want to see me do that. The corporate joint committee consultation. And I'm going to invite councillor Jordan to introduce this item. Thank you. Thank you councillor Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The concept of corporate joint committees was contained within the Local Government and Elections Bill passed by Senedd last month. These new corporate bodies will be the vehicle for regional collaboration and can employ staff, hold assets and budgets and undertake functions. The functions that they will cover and the governance arrangements are set out in the corporate joint committee regulations, which are currently being consulted on by Welsh Government. I'm bringing this paper to you today to seek approval of a response to be submitted on behalf of the council. The draft response has been informed by input from members at a meeting of the Public Services Select Committee, to which all members were invited. We need to be clear that this consultation is not about saying yes or no to the concept. We've already indicated in previous consultations that we were not in favor of this approach. That argument has been lost. The debate now is to move on to the governance arrangements and how CJCs will operate. Welsh Government have determined that there will be four CJCs. Monmashia will be part of the South East Wales one, which will occupy the same footprint as the Cardiff Capital Region. It's anticipated that the current city deal structure will transform into the CJC. The CJC will cover three functions. Firstly, preparing, monitoring, reviewing and revising the strategic development plan. Secondly, developing a regional transport plan. And thirdly, the economic wellbeing function encompassing the current regional approaches to the city and growth deals into the CJC structures. CJCs can be established by Welsh Government or by authorities themselves. The three functions I've mentioned have been mandated by ministers. However, if this council wanted to use CJCs as a vehicle for future collaborations, they wouldn't need to be on the same footprint as a South East Wales CJC and could set up by as few as two councils. Part of 3.5 of the report sets out the principles with... Paragraph three five of the report sets out the principles without underpinning the regulations. And paragraph three six describes some of the key governance arrangements for CJC's. They will be established on a one-member, one-vote basis, with those members being the leader of the ten councils in the city region. They'll have delegated powers to enable decisions without the need of ratification by the constituent principal authorities. They will be accountable to constituent principal councils and members who report back and must respond to questions and scrutiny. They can set up subcommittees and lead on specific functions and can agree other members, such as cabinet members or co-optees. And they must appoint a chief executive, chief financial officer, monitoring officer and chief governance officer. However, these could be provided by constituent authority or via secondment. It's worth members being aware that the CJC's could end up playing a significant role in ensuring that the region is able to access and assess many effective uses of success at EU funds, known as the Shared Prosperity Fund. They are not created with this in mind. It's simply an accident of timing, but one which may prove favourable for local government. The Public Services Select Committee looked at the consultation and highlighted a number of concerns, including the decision by Welsh ministers to impose CJC's rather than leaving it to the direction of locally elected councillors to assess whether they added value, concerns about scrutiny and accountability with the CJC able to establish its own arrangements and the concentration of power in a single individual from each organisation. And the cost of the CJC with these bodies being able to set up their own budgets, which will have to be met by local authorities. The response put before you today is informed by these points and others on which there was broad agreement, including the concentration of power in a small number of individuals. However, individual members or groups may choose to put forward their own responses to the consultation in addition to the ones submitted by the council as a whole. I'll conclude by saying that the council is committed to regional working over many years and has seen real benefits from collaborating when it makes sense to do so. We are, however, committed to local democracy and are opposed to CJD's being imposed by Welsh Government. Madam Chair, I'll take you to the recommendation referred to in paragraph three, two-one of the report, that the draft response to the consultation in corporate joint committees contained an appendix one be submitted on behalf of the council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Jordan. I see that councillor Jane Pratt has indicated she wishes to second the report. Would you like to speak now, councillor Pratt? We do have the raised hand facility in the chat bar as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I would just like to second the report that councillor Jordan has just presented. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pratt. Councillor Petroni, you've indicated you wish to speak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was on that PSP and those are all the points I raised. I have major concerns about this and I heard the cabinet members say, the argument is lost. Yeah, and I appreciate that. But I don't think the consultation response from this council is strong enough and doesn't reflect the strength of feeling in that meeting, which was in that committee meeting particularly, that was cross-party. For example, on the scrutiny section, we just say, we recognise there'll be scrutiny arrangements. It'd be important to implement some arrangements, yes, in a future date, yes. And that it should include provision that any scrutiny committee does not include a member of the CJC. That's already in the consultation. They already say that. Is politically balanced? It already says that. And that has access to appropriate independent advice. It already says that. It doesn't say, what I said in that committee and what the cabinet members just said, there are strong concerns that the scrutiny arrangement is basically at their own discretion. Actually, not basically, it says that. It says it's at their own discretion apart from those three caveats, which, you know, an organisation that concentrates power in few, so as few as seven, to be core, as I understand it, with the power over huge strategic arrangements, over the power of future shared prosperity funds, if I can say it, which is deeply concerning. And they can cut up their own budget, they count their own bureaucracy of officers, they have their own, they set up their own scrutiny arrangements and have their own voting system. So once they have one member, one vote, after that, they can do any voting system they want and there's nothing we can do about it. And for once, I'm going to agree with a cabinet member. I think it's first time for everything, I know, maybe it's Christmas. But this is a way of merging councils without merging councils. Let's just say it, okay? And I say, you either merge councils and have that row and have that political debate, or you don't. This halfway house of another layer of bureaucracy with another layer of officers, where the public will not understand, not care to understand, making decisions that's not having a clear line of accountability and a democratic vote, I'm opposed to, Chair, completely opposed. And our consultation should really reflect that level hostility. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, councillor Petroni. Councillor Howarth, would you like to speak now?
Chairman, I don't know whether the camera's on there. Yes, thank you, Chairman. And yeah, I endorse everything councillor Petroni, the leader of the opposition party group has said there. I do have major concerns with all this and I'll ask every member in the chamber on screen today is, do you understand actually where all this is going? Because come to that meeting a few weeks ago there now, I've got to hold my hands up and say, I actually was cross with myself understanding the process of where we were with this. And I think a lot of members sitting there today will actually not understand where all this is going. Now I have a better understanding of it. I'd asked the leader there and the deputy leader and the leading group as well to actually probably get us all together one day and sit down and let's go through this. Because we're going to put a response there and the cabinet member's quite correct there, is what difference is it going to make? For me, number one is, this prosperity fund, which is going to be a hell of a lot of money. Do you believe, members, that the English government, which is going to hand this money over, the seven hundred and something million pounds, which will be the farming subsidy also, we've learnt this week that the farming subsidy is going to be reduced. So I'll round everything off to four hundred million pounds. Who is going to be in control of that? Do you believe that the Welsh Government are going to route four regions to be in control of four hundred million pound? No chance. To be in control of a hundred million pound per region for me is probably one of the, one of the better ideas from this. It'll give us something to have there. Having the two, the capital regional fund and having this also, they've got to combine the two for me and have the one. The cost of all this as well. Yeah, I mean, nobody's got any costs in there of what it's going to cost. I would ask the leader for us to get together as a council and have a full and thorough chat about this because we're shoving it before us today. I believe a lot of members don't even know what we're talking about here. And I've got to be honest, I was unsure some weeks ago now when we got to the debate in the select about this. Now I've got a better idea of where we are. The chief executive was very honest as well and he is quite right there in saying, I mean, the direction of this is, we've got to go with it. I go with things as long as we get something out of it. And I think that's where we as a council need to have that furry debate. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Howarth. Councillor Fox, would you like to speak now?
Chair, I didn't ask to speak today, did I?
No.
Councillor Fox.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I was inviting councillor Fox. It was probably the way I said it, apologies, councillor Fox.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. Thanks, Paul, for presenting it. And, and I know Dimitri's views and Simon's and their views that many of us have shared from the beginning of the conversation on CJC's. And, and we were, that's been expressed quite a lot from the local government family all the way through, by certain members of it anyway, that we really didn't like the fact that Wales Government were mandating us to do something where we were already working together well, regionally. And, you know, the regional dynamic is something, I'm afraid, well, we've been engaged with it for many, many years now. But it's, and it's going to be with us. And I suppose it's that regional dynamic which does stay off a reorganisation of local government. And so there's been a, you know, we've been, there's been a, moved in that direction for a long time. And the Cardiff Capital Region mirrors pretty well what the CJC, well, actually, the CJC's mirroring what we're already got in place voluntarily at the city deal, at the Cardiff Capital Region level. So I haven't got quite so much fears on that because I know how, how the, the capital region works. And I believe that we could morph into this CJC quite easily. However, those deeper concerns that raised by Dimitri and Simon and not just them, by many members, is our genuine concerns. But we can't do much about it. Simon, we, we consulted all members last July, I think it was, on the bill. And then specifically, that's what the other day's session was, at the scrutiny session with all members present, to actually go through this element of the CJC's. And there are a lot of concerns and there's a lot of people who don't really understand what it might entail. The, you talked, Simon, about the Shared Prosperity Fund and we don't know exactly where that will come to yet. The Wales Government would like the Shared Prosperity Fund, which is a replacement for European Fund, into flow to that, to the Wales Government. Wales Government to distribute it out to regional bodies like CJC's to administer on their behalf under their investment framework. That Wales Government's position, that might not be UK Government's position. The UK Government may decide that it devolves straight to local authorities or to any established regional grouping already, which is likely to be a CJC. I think so. It's a bit premature to have the debate about how European replacement monies are going to be used yet because we don't really know what the, what's going to be on the table. We haven't had clarity yet following the, the spending review a couple of weeks ago. We were hoping to get some clarity around that. Let's hope we do get it in the future. But I think the report itself, in fairness to the author, I think he did capture, capture things pretty well. I don't think there's a, when I read through it, I felt at the time it was balanced. I thought it caught it reasonably well. You could, I think there was a strong statement on mandation there, but if that needs to be beefed up, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. But what I do know is these CJC's look like they're here. We can't undo that now. We're going to have to work with them. And we're going to have to make the best fist of it. And, and I think, Simon, if we are to have a further discussion, as all of us, as we should do, perhaps it's a member seminar about how these things might evolve going forward and how we should be, what we should be asking now a member of a CJC to, how would you want that individual to represent this council on that forum? And, you know, so start to have that forward-thinking conversation perhaps, and that is something we can look to do. And perhaps link that with a briefing on the work of the Cardiff Capital Region, for instance, to give some confidence of how that regional working system is already working. And just reflecting on probably several areas of regional working where we can evidence that there's nothing to be feared, to be feared from. However, I, you know, I, I don't disagree with Dimitri's concerns about, you know, the significant, significant decision-making invested into a few individuals. And I can absolutely see that. So, Madam Chairman, I'm happy if we need to beef the, the, the report up, the response up a tad to pull up, you know, to strengthen some of those issues about our disappointment on the level of mandation. That's a message which resonates with what many of us have been saying for a long time.
Thank you, councillor Fox. There are no other hands raised, so I'm going to propose to go to the vote. Councillor Jordan, would you like to offer any comments before we go to the vote? If we could have.
Can I just get clarification, just, just so I can come away, if you don't mind, if Peter and Paul would, okay. Is, so we're voting now on the presumption we're going to beef it up on the scrutiny side, just so we're clear. So we're voting now with the, with the intention that we're going to beef up our response. Is that, is that accurate? Because that changes my vote.
But from, from my perspective, Dimitri, sorry, Madam Chair. I, if, if we can, if we hear those messages you're saying, that you've said, you know, and I'm comfortable as leader and that we can strengthen some of those views around the scrutiny, if you wish, you know. At the end of the day, we've got to get something in. It needs to represent the views of the council. I thought it was balanced, but I take your point. If you want some beefing up a little bit, that doesn't hurt. And it, you know, I would support that. So I would say we're voting on, on, on this. But, but if we could strengthen it a little more, and that can be in consultation with the, with Matt Gaithouse, the author, and Paul and myself, if you're happy to delegate that to us, we can do that.
I'm going to invite the chief executive in now because it's actually changing somewhat. So he's going to offer some advices to the way forward. Thank you, Mr Matthews.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't actually think it needs to change too much. It's always particularly difficult, isn't it, when you're, you're drafting a consultation response from a full council to actually come up with a perfect set of words that balance out the views or potentially slightly different views of up to forty-three different elected members. So I don't think the contributions today necessitate you worrying about amendments or anything of that nature. If you're content to support the recommendation and in doing so, give councillor Jordan the ability just to, to offer some reasonably modest amendments to a small number of parts of the response, I think that's absolutely fine. But in doing so, I think you just need to recognise again that you'd have to be a heck of a clever scribe to find a perfect set of words that will satisfy everybody. But I think it's fine to approve the recommendation and ask the cabinet member just to reflect on some, some small parts that have been raised today.
Thank you, Mr Matthews. I'm going to invite then councillor Taylor, and she's raised her hand.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask a similar question to councillor Petroni, but I, I would also say, I do recognise that in the report we talk about our concerns around the cost of this particular, you know, this additional potential level of local government, particularly at the present time. But I would say I think that is an area that does require some, some of that. We've described it as beefing up, I think, and the scrutiny arrangements, I absolutely agree with colleagues about that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. In that case, we do have the voting app in the chat bar, so I'm going to invite members to now vote, please. Everybody clear on what they're voting? It is to the draft response to the consultation on corporate joint committees contained at appendix one be submitted on behalf of the council, taking into consideration the comments have just been made. Thank you, members. We have a clear majority for, as you can see, thirty-one, four and one abstention. Thank you very much indeed. So we will now move on to the third item after this, when we will be taking a break. The updated asset investment policy, which is going to be introduced by councillor Phil Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. And the purpose of this report is to amend the existing asset investment policy and to reflect audit committees' recommendations, national guidance and learning, and as endorsed by the council's investment committee. In the recommendations, the council agree to the proposed update on the amendments, asset investment policy, to agree the revised term of reference for the investment committee and that all future investment proposals are to consider the environmental impact and sustainable development principles as part of the business case for any proposed investments. of the business case for any proposed investments. To give you a bit of background, the council approved the asset investment policy in May 2018, and then a further report was approved in Feb 19, which extended the policy to enable commercial loan funding, the use of investment funding to undertake development or refurbishments, and the use of equity or debenture interests. The audit committee took an annual review in March of this year, which identified opportunities for improvement arising from an internal audit review, changing financial practice guidelines relating to commercial investments, and self-reflection on the investments undertaken to date. The investment committee has considered the proposed amendments and have endorsed the proposals. The terms of reference have been reviewed and revised and are all set out in appendix one. The proposed changes are the ability for the investment committee members to nominate deputies with full voting rights in the event that they are unable to attend. That gets around a problem that we've already experienced on the committee. The requirement for all officers and external advisers attending meetings to sign declarations of interest, that was a particular concern raised at the time of the review, and the investment committee is to undertake an annual self-review to determine the effectiveness of the committee and any training requirements can be established at that time. So the current policy identifies the fact that it should be considered in the business case for a potential investment, which does not explicitly include the environmental impact and sustainable development principles. Given the council's declarations of a climate emergency and our commitment to reduce our environmental impact, the asset investment policy has been amended to ensure that any future investment proposals include evaluation within the business case of the environment and the sustainable development considerations of that investment. Evaluations will reference the environmental impact and sustainable development principles referenced in the Wellbeing and Future Generations Act and alignment with the council's evolving climate change action plan. Madam Chair, as I said earlier, the full arrangements are in the appendix one of the report, and I would recommend that members have a good look at that. The annual performance review enabled officers to evaluate opportunities to improve governance and provide the investment committee members with greater access to information to improve investment decisions and manage risks. A performance dashboard will be developed and reported to members of the investment committee on a quarterly basis so that the performance of individual assets can be measured against the original business case assumptions, financial investment criteria, and wider market trends. The risk assessment is to be maintained and reported back to the investment committee on a quarterly basis, and if appropriate, more frequently, to reflect the changing circumstances of individual investments or wider financial or structural market conditions. And of course, in the current climate, that is particularly important. We're going to have a two-stage approach and that will initially deal with financial viability issues. They will be assessed. That goes past that point, an additional business case will be prepared. We go past that point, a final case will be prepared and then be considered for investment by the investment committee. Potential investment opportunities that are not progressed to stage one approval are reported to the investment committee with the accompanying rationale for their rejection. The current financial climate and market conditions have exemplified the need for the investment committee to continually reassess the council's commercial risk appetite. Therefore, the committee has recently undertaken such a review and determined to curtail all investment activity and potential acquisitions at this time unless they are in county or grant-funded or will further a wider policy aim. The investment committee will continue to review this position in line with the asset investment policy. So if I can go back to the recommendations, Chair, and they are that the council agree to the proposed update and amendments of the asset investment policy as contained in appendix one, to agree the revised terms of reference for the investment committee, again, as contained in appendix one, and that all future investment proposals are to consider the environmental impact and sustainable development principles as part of the business case for any proposed investment. And I make those, propose those recommendations, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Can I invite councillor Maureen Powell next, please? You're muted, Maureen.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes, we can hear you, Maureen.
I think you've gone unmute again, Maureen. We could hear you, but you've gone off again. You're away and it goes. Well, that goes off, isn't it? Don't know what's the matter with this, eh? Right.
You heard that?
No, we didn't.
Now then, I think we're all right. Thank you, Chairman. Sorry about that. I don't know what's the matter with it today. I would like to second councillor Murphy in his proposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it's all a bit slow today. councillor Watts, can I invite you to speak? It is you this time.
Yes, sorry, Chair, I was a little bit, Maureen was a little bit close to the screen, so I was a bit startled when I looked up. I do apologise, Chair. Phil's microphone was a bit in and out there, and I think he mentioned, and maybe he can correct me, that there would be training then for people potentially going on that committee, which I would, if that is true, I would welcome, because when you look at, say, for example, historically, some of the risk associated with some of the investment that we've involved ourselves with, I would question really whether or not some members actually had sufficient knowledge or had gleaned sufficient information or experience really, Chair, in that sector. You know, I know that there are many, many people on this local authority, excuse me, who are very successful people, self-made people, made it their own way, all understand investments, the financial markets, so on and so forth, but there may be some that don't. So if Phil is saying that, then I have got no problem with it. Thank you, Chair.
Want me to come back in on that, Chair?
Yes, please.
The training that was being considered would be additional training. We have a considerable amount of expertise, both in-house and is brought in externally whenever decisions are made. And, you know, that has always been the case. We're very, very careful when we consider these investments. I would add, Chair, that both, we have appropriate officers with us today if there's any technical questions that are asked, and I'll bring them in if the occasion arises.
Thank you. councillor Patrini?
Thank you, Chair. I broadly support it because of the scrutiny, enhanced scrutiny arrangements and training arrangements. But if I understood councillor Murphy correctly, that we're freezing all investment opportunities, which on the surface I have no problem with it, but that presumably means that our future plans to develop housing are also frozen, which was the original point of this committee, to build out housing, to make it a kind of income stream for the council. So that now has been binned. Can I get that clarified?
There is a report coming to Cabinet on the 16th specifically about that. So I suggest that you refer to the Cabinet report, councillor Patrini.
Is that available? Is that publicly available, Phil?
Yeah, well, it's in the Cabinet paper, well, it's coming out in the Cabinet papers for the 16th.
Right.
Go to Debbie, go to camera on.
Yeah, councillor Debbie, could you turn your camera off for us, please? Right.
Peter Davis would like to come in on that.
Okay, Mr Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Again, technically, it's just Saturday, and I hope you can hear me, but probably can't see me. So I'd just like to, just further to councillor Murphy's point in response to councillor Dimitri's question, I think it's just important, and it is in fact referenced within the body of the report. So the discussions recently with investment committee in terms of, I guess, tempering some of our commercial activity at the moment, that is centred around restricting our commercial interests, certainly outside of the county. So we would still potentially, potentially, look to entertain commercial investment within county, either where that was supported by grant funding or in fact where that was aligned to the council's policy objectives. So to councillor Dimitri's point in terms of housing, that would still fit within the narrowed constraints of what the investment committee may look to entertain going forward, and in fact the council.
Thank you, Mr Davis. Right, I'm now going to invite members to vote on that. Next, councillor Murphy, wish to add anything before we go to vote?
No, Chair, I'm free to vote.
Thank you. We'll just wait for the app. Here we are, members. Updated asset investment policy, detailed by councillor Murphy. Just give it a few more minutes, but it's clearly carried, councillors, with 26 at the moment. 27. That's fine, thank you all very much. I think now that it's two minutes past four, we could have a 10-minute break and be ready to start again at just after 10 past four. Thank you. Be ready to start again at just after 10 past four. Thank you. Thank you, members, we're ready to resume. Hope you're feeling a bit refreshed now. We will move on to the motions and the first one is from County Councillor Lisa Dimmock. Can I invite you Lisa to? Then your motion, thank you.
Thank you Chair. In 2019, Welsh Government declared a climate change emergency shortly after publishing their plan, which I know we are still awaiting further details on. And I'm fully aware there's a pandemic going on, but we cannot press the pause on the climate change emergency. So I put this motion forward that we ask the council to call upon Welsh Government to adopt the climate emergency 10-point plan for Wales as launched by Prime Minister Boris Johnson on the 18th of November, which looks at protecting and restoring our natural environment, planting 30,000 hectares of trees every year, whilst creating and retaining thousands of jobs, making our homes, schools and hospitals greener, warmer and more energy efficient, whilst creating thousands more jobs by 2030, and a target to install 600,000 heat pumps every year by 2028, and becoming a world leader in technology to capture the store and store harmful emissions away from the atmosphere, to name but a few. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dimmock. Councillor Jordan, can I invite you to speak?
Yes, I'll second this motion, my chairman.
Thank you very much councillor Jordan, and we now have councillor Pratt, can I invite you to speak?
Thank you very much Madam Chairman, and I welcome this motion which I fully support because as councillor Dimmock has stated, we had a white paper from Welsh Government back in June 2019, and since then we've had very little from them. So whilst I accept that a lot of the things within those 10 points are not within the gift of the local authority, we have been working and acting on these as part of our climate emergency plan. And only last week officers met with Welsh Government and to actually, who actually recognise us as the most progressive council in Wales on climate change. And we're working with them, with the Energy Service and Cardiff Capital Region to identify how we can work collaboratively and take these forward at a greater pace, which I really welcome. The Cardiff Capital Region City Deal has recently confirmed that solving the societal change, challenge of accelerating carbon reduction will be one of the three priority themes within their 10 million challenge fund. But we still lack strategic direction and ambition from Welsh Government. So I think that if Welsh Government did adopt these 10 points, which are built around the UK's strength, it would be a really good starting point for them. With officers, I have actually looked at these 10 points and compared with, compared them with what we've done here in Mammothshire. And one of the things that we are obviously doing is working with River Simple, which we're piloting the hydrogen powered cars in Abigavenny and we've installed a hydrogen fuelling station. Only last week I made a video with River Simple, which you are able to have a look at, it's on YouTube. If you Google the sole hydrogen car maker, in the journalist makes a couple of errors, he's actually promoted me to an officer of the council, but apart from that, it is actually a very good video to have a look at. And clearly hydrogen avoids the issues of mining of lithium and also disposing of the batteries which makes electric vehicles, they can't be fully recycled. And we look forward to welcoming this vehicle very shortly, which will for a while become part of our fleet and it will enable officers to use it. So we've also been exploring how we can replace fleet vehicles with electric and I've tested a waste vehicle, an electric waste vehicle which I've driven. We're also going to in January have two electric vans in our catering department. And we've got charging points at Kimmin View and Derry View Schools, which is in the school catering. Our countryside wardens have also trialled electric vehicles. We've, we've bid, we've bid for an electric refuse vehicle and we're waiting to hear whether we've got the funding for that. And we've also bid for three electric vehicles and we'll know by the 4th of January if we've got them. We've also organised a demonstration of a vacuum sweeper in the new year. And we've had a good look at our charging infrastructure. We've surveyed our sites, our depots, and we've worked out we can put eight points in Cardicott Depot, eight points in Mitchell Troy and 29 points in Raglan. So we're really making progress. And we're looking at staff mileage to reduce that wherever possible and increase pool cars to make them alternative fuel. So the River Simple car will also provide an opportunity for that. So I think that the, the, the paper brought by Welsh Government in 2019, it's made some points which, for example, all new homes and public buildings built in Wales should be zero carbon from 2020. And also support for a national housing retrofit programme. Well, I don't think we've seen little evidence of much progress being made in these two areas. And I think we've heard today about the number of young people that sadly are going to lose their jobs from industries in the hospitality and leisure sectors. And I think Welsh Government really need to up their game and think about the green industries of the future and training these young people up so that this retrofitting of homes can take place to make our homes much more sustainable and also more energy efficient and to stop fuel poverty, which a lot of people are wrestling with. So I think we are one of the first authorities, you know, that is getting help with the city deal. And we're also looking at how we're going to sort out the on-street charging of electric vehicles. Our commercial estate has had a complete survey of all of our buildings to make them energy efficient. We'd like to have another social farm, but sadly we're not able to do that. So I think that, you know, we're really making progress on Mammothshire County Council. Our old fashioned carbon capture, our tree officer Mark Cleaver is exploring sites where we can plant more trees. And our waste, our recycling is up overall to over 70% this year, which has been absolutely fantastic. But obviously there's a lot more that needs to be done and a lot of the 10 points that the Prime Minister has in his plan, which came out a couple of weeks ago, do need strategic direction and ambition from Welsh Government. So I really will support this and I would like to see Welsh Government using this as a blueprint so that we can get cracking because only yesterday, the, the chairman of United Nations stated that we have an absolute catastrophe on our hands worldwide with plastic seas, fires and flooding, which we've experienced ourselves here in Mammothshire. So I will be fully supporting councillor Dimmock's motion. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Howes? If I can speak.
Thank you Chairman, and thank you for your motion councillor Dimmock. That's really important motion there that we don't lose focus of where we, where we are with this. I'd just like to ask, and councillor Jane Pratt has answered a few of the questions, but I do know going back to a report that we had within the council some weeks ago now, reference to the waste strategy and direction of future waste and recycling in Mammothshire. Why is a council we haven't taken forward the, the initiative of actually having electric vehicles? They've been out there for many years, these electric vehicles, yes, they're not, they're not, let's say as, as, as what they are, but they, they are there. And it's like our school buses, we run our children in Mammothshire round, and we've been running around for decades and we've been, we've been buying buses, we've been leasing buses. I cannot understand why we haven't, it's all right to say we're talking about, we're looking at it, we should, we should have shown some initiative here in spending what, we're going to buy some new vehicles very soon, quarter of a million pounds on these vehicles. Surely we should have brought one of these electric vehicles in. We should not be looking, we should be doing it, they're there to have. So let, let's do it. And I, I do urge us as a council, we need to meet the carbon footprint as well. We have vehicles in our council which do clog our streets on waste collections, the evidence is there, we need to progress on that. We, we can't accuse the traffic behind our vehicles which is doing recycling. That's very poor, that's really poor of us as a council. Evidence based, I think we can do more as a council. There are complications, massive complications with all this. And I'm sure the government knows what they are. 2030, we're all going to go, we're supposed to deliver a lot of these things. Is that going to happen? I don't think so. And I can just give you one example, where I come from, on our estates, private or council estates, whatever, you imagine people having electric leads running from their vehicles out to their, from their vehicles, their, their properties. Three or four vehicles, think about it, some of them have got three or four vehicles there, the children or whoever is at home. It ain't going to happen straight away and I don't think it's going to happen for a very long time. But we as a council, we've got the funding, we've got the borrowing. We can do it. Let's do it. Let's not talk about it and look at it. Let's do it because it will go on for months if we don't do it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Just to point out that councillor Pratt has indicated she's happy to respond and I think that needs to be done outside this meeting. We note your points councillor Howes, but we'll move on now to councillor Betroney.
Thank you Chair, and I thank councillor Dimmock for bringing this motion because climate change can't be discussed enough. It is a global catastrophe and we're going through it. And even if we stopped all carbon emissions this second, carbon will continue to rise in the atmosphere and we will pay the consequences of it. So it's pertinent to bring it forward. It's a shame it's been made political. And I, and I've just heard the most ill-informed cabinet member I've ever heard. And she said the officers have gone through it. And so if the officers hold this opinion, well, I need to have some words with the officers if they, if they agree with the cabinet member. She says the Welsh Government haven't done anything. Well, I beg to differ, there's 100 action points in their release, release, release plan. And actually they broadly mirror what Boris Johnson said in November, but we announced them last year. And then we've got several, sorry, the dog wants to leave and he must be served. And we've got, we've got 100 actions from that. And we've had the Clean Air Report which came out in August 2020, the cabinet member said she hadn't seen anything. We've had a statement on climate week on the 30th of October. We had the Climate Change Emergency Declaration on the 20, in April. The cabinet member said she hadn't seen anything on retrofitting around houses. Well, I can tell you that is definitely happening because our cells like MHA have been arguing with government, basically because Welsh Government want to retrofit all those things into social housing. And that's been going for months. So maybe the cabinet member needs to go on top of a brief for once, that would be lovely. So I, I don't see why there's a conflict here really. Actually, if we adopted, if we support councillor Dimmock's motion now, we'll be watering down the Welsh Government's one. So why would we ask to do that? And there's two other technical points. One is, many of the Boris Johnson statements, I'm not entirely sure they're devolved. You need, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I'll defer to a lawyer, but some of them are in grey areas, particularly around big climate change projects around energy, there's about wattage and what is devolved is a certain wattage and gigawatts obviously, and terawatts and others are not, that's definitely UK government only. Has that been checked by councillor Dimmock? Or the officers, but maybe the officers have and they think it's legally sound. I would love to get an officer's opinion on that. Nuclear energy, that's highly controversial. The Prime Minister announced clean nuclear energy. He's managed to get rid of nuclear waste, which I didn't know he was a genius, but bloody hell, wow, that's incredible. Nuclear waste he's managed to get rid of, amazing. I'm not sure that's entirely green. And there's a huge debate about the climate change in the green lobby about whether you use nuclear energy. And also he wants to make the city of London the finance capital for green initiatives. That's a part of his 10-point plan if I'm reading councillor Dimmock's motion correctly. No problem with London becoming the green, financial, but what's that, why is Welsh Government going to make London? London doesn't need any help. London is doing well. London is one of the good areas for finance. We need to get Wales in its own finance industry. So we have a motion here that's not technically sound because I'm not sure it's fully devolved. We have not technically green because it's about nuclear energy. And we're promoting the City of London in Wales. Doesn't make any sense to me and it's watering down what we already have pledged. But I must admit, the pledges that Boris Johnson's said in November, I believe, is almost, almost exactly the same as what Welsh Government announced a year ago. So there, there doesn't even need to be conflict here. It's an unsound motion and I know they'll pass it because the Tories do it, but you'll look stupid, but that's nothing unusual.
Thank you councillor Betroney. I'm sure councillor Pratt and officers will be happy for you to, to sort of clarify a few of those positions, but obviously outside this meeting, those issues. We'll move on now to councillor Watkins.
Thank you very much, Chair. Lisa, thank you very much for bringing forward a motion about climate emergency. It is really important that it stays right at the top of our agenda and we really need to make sure we never lose our focus from how important it is that we have to always think about the climate right at the very start when we're thinking about any of our responses to the world. However, I cannot support your motion. Boris Johnson's plan is woefully inadequate to space the actual scale of the climate emergency. He announced £12 billion of funding. When you set that actually against what other developed nations are putting in, this is much, much less. Added to that, only £3 billion of his investment was actually new investment. The rest has already been promised previously. So we should really be calling it a £3 billion investment plan. It's also just not credible. Even on some very basic programmes such as the Green Homes Grant, he's announced a one-year funding extension. I'm sure the Conservatives on the council would agree that any business which needs to actually invest and train staff can't do that on the basis of a one-year plan. You have to be able to know that you've got surety. Businesses have suffered hugely during the pandemic. We have to approach investment and the way a business approaches the, the climate. Businesses need certainty as to much longer financial terms than a one-year plan. Also, where are the strides being made to reduce fuel poverty, to take people out of fuel poverty? One of the best ways to do that is to reduce heating demand. And we're not seeing any signs of that with actually in his plan. And also, as Dimitri pointed out, I cannot possibly support any scheme which places nuclear at the heart of its policy. There's no way that I can do that. And even from just an economic point of view, we've seen the spiralling costs at Hinkley Point C that make, when the true cost of nuclear is known, it makes it completely financially unsustainable. Renewable energy has been proven to actually become far cheaper now and we must place much greater investment in renewables rather than actually a nuclear alternative, let alone the environmental costs of nuclear waste. And even the tree planting pledge that he made, it was actually for less trees than he did in his general election promise. How ridiculous can we be now? We are meant to be planting more trees. I'd have welcomed an increase, but a decrease on what he had pledged in the 2019 election? No, I'm sorry. The government's own figures say the strategy will save 180 million tonnes of carbon dioxide between 2023 and 2032. But the government's own projections say what is actually critically needed is 331 million tonnes just to meet the interim targets. So no, I cannot support the motion because quite frankly, what we need to call on Welsh Government to do is something much larger, much bigger and much more capable of actually tackling the climate emergency as we have got it. But thank you for putting climate back on the agenda.
Thank you councillor Watkins. Councillor Fox, you're next to speak.
Okay, am I unmuted? I am. Yeah, and thank you, Madam Chairman. Lisa, thanks very much for, for bringing this motion forward. Oh, excuse my phone going off in the background. Oh, sorry, I'll try and, please try and ignore it everyone. I don't see anything political about this. I mean, Dimitri's childish attacks are, are something we do get used to lately and obviously clearly threatened by the fact that we've got a sensible approach forward from the UK government. And we're just asking that, that this council encourages Wales Government to sign up to it. And I'm, I'm disappointed that Joe is actually turning down the opportunity to, to take something forward. The elections haven't started yet, Joe, you didn't, you know, try too hard on, on this yet. This, this plan is absolutely about bringing opportunities, jobs and so much more to the whole of Wales, to new jobs in those industrial heartlands which have been struggling. You know, Port Talbot is referenced in there, jobs coming there, North Wales helping the car industry with its innovation and things that it has those specialities in the north of Wales. There is nothing on here which is, 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 is not green. Okay, you don't like the nuclear side of, of things, we hear that. But there are so many other areas in here and I just can't, I'm just so surprised that, that Dimitri wanted to attack something so much. Wales Government are dragging their feet on this. You can quote all your 100 points and everything, where's the evidence on the ground? Nothing's happening. It's always talk, talk, talk with Wales Government and nothing ever happens. And, you know, so you want to go back to your visas down in the bay and say, look, listen to Monmouthshire, let's get behind Boris Johnson for once, let's actually embrace his, his message. Don't forget he's speaking on behalf of, for 55 million people, not three. And Wales Government can't even make any traction in a small country like this. So we need to look to UK government to give us direction in this because your party frankly can't do it. So Lisa, I will be supporting you.
Okay, councillor Roger Harris next, please. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not politically, eh? Peter's just said it's not political. It's the biggest laugh that I've heard in many a long time. I think Dimitri and Joe have summed it up. And I'm not quite sure, Lisa, if you actually thought this up on your own or were put up to it. But, you know, your, your party has got nothing but hatred for the, the Welsh Government in, in, in Cardiff. And it just shines through the whole time. You know, we are in a climate emergency, we shouldn't be having this, having this sort of bickering. We should be pulling together and, and, you know. And your party have lumbered us with Boris Johnson, basically one way or another. And you can't argue with that and he's an absolute total disaster. So if we're talking about being non-political like Peter was, then I'm being non-political on, on, on that one. Anything to do with Boris Johnson is a disaster. And if we vote for this, then we're heading down the disastrous slope. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Watts next, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Peter, if I was you, I'd return that call. It could be Boris on the phone as we speak, updating you on what he wants you to say for him. This Boris's announcement doesn't remotely meet the scale of jobs for the emergency we face. We've got Covid, we've got, well, they're estimating now at least 2.6 million people unemployed then, but potentially by the end of the year. This is, this is a real emergency. It's not a game, Lisa. This isn't a political game, these are real people, real lives. And we do already have a climate change emergency on our hands. And when you look at the real money, Joe's just covered it, at best it's £4 million, at the very best. So it doesn't even touch the sides. When you look at Germany and you look at France as well especially, they're putting tens of millions of pounds into this. It's wholly inadequate. I'm sorry, I can't support it, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Lisa now to sum up before we go to vote on this motion. Thank you councillor Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Jane. It's good to know Welsh Government consider Monmouthshire as paving the way. And I look forward to seeing the outcome of the pilot. And can I thank and congratulate the team on what they have done so far? Councillor Harris, I can, I can certainly say that I don't have any hate towards Cardiff, but we do need clear direction and leadership to end this climate change nightmare. And it seems to me that the only place that was coming from was UK government. Maybe Welsh Government need to be more clear. Thank you, Chair. Can I move the motion?
Thank you councillor Dimmock. We'll now go to the vote, the voting app is in the chat bar. Can I advise members to vote? Thank you, members. We have a majority on that one. 21 for, 11 against and no abstentions. It looks as if there's a, we've got one or two members who haven't been able to vote, but it's clearly carried. So thank you very much. We will move on to the next motion, which is councillor Betroney.
Thank you, Chair. And unlike the previous motion, which was just a shocker, I'm trying to not make this political because actually both governments have engaged in a version of a fire break. I don't really care what you call it, fire break, lockdown, it's, it's irrelevant to me. But it's really important that on, I believe the same is true for climate change, to be honest, which is a shame councillor Dimmock, I thought she was better than that, would be on board with where parties need to unite. There are some issues like climate change, like the pandemic, where, you know, it doesn't matter who you vote for, what ideology you particularly believe in, it will affect us all or it could take a loved one. And this is one of those issues. So I put this because unfortunately, and I can't fathom any logical reason, the Welsh Conservatives have decided to go against their own, even English counterparts and oppose lockdowns. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't like lockdowns particularly either. You know, we want to get on with our lives, people we love, we want to see. I get all that and as much as anyone else, I want to go out and feel free to enjoy things. But there are times when you have to sacrifice those things for the greater good and this is one of those times. Now, you can debate whether it was long enough, whether it was rightly timed, what the evidence base was. But clearly, if you look at the evidence base worldwide, lockdowns work and they stem the growth. And that's critical for this council, as Julie Boothroyd eloquently highlighted, is if we reduce the number of cases, we just save so many lives, particularly amongst our most vulnerable in Monmouthshire and across Wales. And just for a few months of pain on a personal level, I know businesses are feeling it much more than others, it is worth it to save thousands of lives. And, you know, the scientists say, best estimation, we've saved thousands of lives with the latest fire break. We're in tears now and there's debate around that and I've engaged in that debate around, on, on social media. But England have done tears as well. And it's, this is the time where they're both clearly, both Boris Johnson and Mark Drakeford, listening to the same scientific advisers. And this is the time to say, right, okay, as a body, we know it saves lives. We know it'll help our frontline workers in social services, to our bin men, to NHS workers that we all platform, we all support. And I have no doubt about that, no doubt about that. But then we have to support fire breaks because unfortunately, even thank God, we've got the vaccine coming and several different versions of the vaccine coming. There'll probably be a need, and I'm happy to be proven wrong in this and I don't want it, but there'll probably be a need for another fire break or lockdown at some point because of Christmas and people seeing each other much more and I understand why. That we're going to need to do again and it's important at this council, and I'll give huge kudos to Fox if he shows some leadership on this and just say, you know what? We're going to break from the Welsh Conservatives and Andrew RT, who seems to be taking a complete unscientific approach. And actually back Boris, Boris Johnson, the actual leader of the Conservative Party, nearly a fraudian slip there. And, you know, say, it's annoying, it's painful, we need the right financial support, but let's support fire breaks because it saves lives. And it's as simple as that, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Judith Thomas, do you have a second for your motion?
Yes, yes, I, I'll second the, the motion, Chair. I speak in support of this fire break policy that, that Mark Drakeford and the Welsh Government brought in. It has proved to be very effective. And in reality, you know, what we're all trying to do, whether you're Conservative or Labour or Lib Dem or Independent, Covid doesn't care. If you're of a certain age or you have certain health issues, if you contract Covid, then in all probability, you will actually die. So, you know, in reality, I think we need to go to fight the pandemic, which goes beyond party political considerations. If you look at the fire break policy, yes, I agree with councillor Dimitri Betroney. The fire break was painful, painful for me, painful for you, painful for, for the public out there. But it, it was and is very necessary to save lives. And let's be honest, if you look at the demography of Monmouthshire, we're always talking, we've got older, a higher proportion of older people living here. If you look at the county council, demography, myself included, many of us are in the danger zone. And therefore we, we must really give consideration to agreeing to the fire break policy if, if it needs to come a second time because it undoubtedly has saved lives. And at least it does as well take the pressure off the health service, the county councils and all other services. If you look at those people, I think they're running on empty. We've, we've had now going towards a year of severe pressure. So I, I fully support this motion to, and ask the council to pass it. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah. Councillor Si Jones next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's undeniable that we've all got to do everything we can to support our communities and to our residents to try and support them through this awful pandemic. And that's particularly important because as a nation, Wales is sicker and poorer than any other UK national region. That sicker and poorer, those are the words that have been used by our own Health Minister and by the First Minister himself. And they are a party that's presided over 20 years of rule in this nation and has created the worst health, the worst deprivation and fundamentally has made us more fragile to the awful impact of the pandemics that we are now going through. Now, Madam Chair, I don't envy the task of the First Minister or indeed any decision maker at this point. I fully respect that all decisions being made at every level of government are all being done with the fully best intentions. However, whilst it's undeniable, we need to protect our communities and our individuals when it comes to the fire break. I'm left considering two particular questions when it comes to this motion. Now, the first question for me is, do I agree with the restrictions or some restrictions for public health measures? 100%, yes, of course I do. The second question, do I agree with a fire break per se or the fire break, as we're talking retrospectively, and the blanket measures that were introduced? Were they proportionate? Did we see clear options appraisals? Well, on that, for me, the jury is out. Now, clearly I'm no expert. I'm very much, as we all are, in the fortuitous position of being able to have an opportunity to have a voice on these matters. So what I've done today in considering this motion is I've considered a couple of government documents to try and help and inform my understanding. Now, the first document for me was the Equality Impact Assessment. Now, if members haven't had a chance to read that, I would suggest that you all get a chance to do that. In that Equality Impact Assessment, it states very clearly that the package of measures that were agreed for implementation between the 23rd of October and the 9th of November, that's the fire break, they infringed on many of the European Convention of Human Rights articles. Now, if that's the case, for me, the question is, where were the options appraisals? Why did the Welsh Government not give us the respect to see those options appraisals and to see the mitigating factors that were going to be put in place to try and prevent the infringement of our human rights in that way? Now, the Equality Impact Assessment goes on to say about the negative impacts around the stay-at-home messages in terms of the respect of women and children experiencing abuse. So that was going to be more negatively impacted, feelings of isolation and loneliness and the fact that there was going to be disproportionate impacts on BAME people, women and disabled people. and disabled people. For the business closures, we know that the fire break has a more negative economic impact on those that sit below the Welsh median in terms of earnings. And in terms of the impact on children and young people, of course, that's really disrupted their lives, and I'll come on to that in a bit more detail in a moment. So it's without doubt, we need to be clear, this fire break has impacted the most vulnerable people in our society the hardest. Now, the second documents I just want to refer to, and again, it's an official document, is the Welsh Government's own technical advice note, which they use to inform, again, the scientific data, which I know councillor Batruni will be so keen on in informing the decisions. I'll keep it brief in terms of this report. It talks about certain measures within the fire break and the impact that they have on lowering the R number. Closure of indoor gyms, low impact. Closure of places of worship, low impact. Closure of non-essential retail, low impact. Closure of close-contact personal services, low impact. Restrictions on outdoor gatherings, low impact. That's the Government's own advice. And what do they do? Well, they close all those service areas, despite acknowledging that they are going to have a low impact on the R number. So the evidence on that, for me, speaks for itself. And finally, Madam Chairman, in terms of the reports I've looked at, this is not an official report, this is my own anecdotal evidence. For me, and this is the biggest issue for me, is the impact that these fire breaks, that these lockdowns are having on our children, their peers, and our counties' children right across Wales and in Monmishaw. Now, they're seeing their future being set out for them without having any voice in that matter, and it's a bleak picture. And it's, again, our most vulnerable children that are going to be impacted the hardest by these fire breaks, these lockdowns. I fear so much for them and for their future, and I've read stories about mental health, for example, that seriously has made me cry thinking about what they're going through. We know childline services have seen 43,000 contacts between March and October, to give some sort of context of where we sit. And what our young people have been asked to sacrifice for others, it far outweighs anything in terms of the health risk to them from this virus. So I'll sum up, Madam Chair, I'm trying to be as brief as I can. I haven't had sight of any report which demonstrates how many lives, 1,000 or otherwise, have been saved by this fire break. So for me personally, I think it's very difficult for us to assess the outcomes from a public health intervention side. As I've just outlined, it's clear the social and economic consequences have been devastating. So how can I assess the fire break value on its public health merits? It's extremely difficult to do so, and so for me personally, and it's a personal belief, I believe a more nuanced, tailored approach might have been more helpful, without having such dire economic and social consequences. Now, Dimitri suggests 1,000 lives have been saved, and for someone who earlier on said is so obsessed with stats...
Chair, just to correct councillor Jones, I didn't suggest it, the medical experts did.
Okay. But I haven't seen that evidence, and I have tried to find it, so perhaps that's just my own fault or my lack of ability to be able to. Okay. All right. But irrespective of that, whilst that might be the case, how many lives, saying councillor Batruni, will we see lost or have been lost because of poverty, because of mental illness, and because of late-diagnosed health conditions? I just need to know where that evidence is going to be, if we're going to be able to provide a rational and well-grounded argument on this. So today's motion to me, and I'm sorry to say this, feels like a deliberate attempt by the leaders of the opposition to politicise a situation. Now, perhaps I've fallen into that trap, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if that's the case. I am deeply passionate about the impact of what we are doing on our next generation, on those people that don't have a voice today on those matters, and those people are our counties' children. So let's be clear, I am not against some of the measures in the fire break itself, nor am I against necessarily lockdowns to try and control the virus. But councillor Batruni, what you have done today is brought forward a policy that's looking backwards, is looking backwards at something that's already happened, when I would respectfully suggest you need to start...
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but it doesn't. It's a fire break policy generically, it's not retrospective.
Well, given the fact that the Welsh Government are currently not yet determining, well, they're determining now what the next set of measures might be, I would suggest this isn't a standard policy, it's going to be changed in the future. So respectfully, that's what I would say. So as I say, I say this would be a backwards-looking policy when councillor Batruni needs to actually broaden his horizon and look forwards, look at our future generations, look to the children, the young people who are going to be paying for this for the rest of their lives. And I pray we can recover from this situation, and I hope the Welsh Government now will make proportionate and considered approaches going forward, not like the recent measures for hospitality, which are quite frankly devastating. And I genuinely, I genuinely wish the Welsh Government all the best of luck, and the UK Government, because I have no interest today or at any other day in making political gain out of this issue. For me, I want what's best for our children, for our next generation. I want them to be happy, I want them to be healthy, and I want to make sure we don't see our most vulnerable people disadvantaged by decisions that we're making in the here and now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right. Two little points before we move on. Councillor Davy, could you turn your camera off, please? It seems to have come back on. And councillor Batruni, please don't interrupt. If it's a point of order, I'm happy to take it, but...
Chair, well, two points of clarification, which was a misinterpretation of my motion.
Chair, if I may, excuse me, Chair, sorry to talk across you, I do apologise. My function to put my hand up seems to have just disappeared again, so I would like to speak if I may.
All right. Bring him in, in due course, councillor Watts. Now, we have councillor Richard John next.
Thank you. Well, firstly, can I just associate myself with the comments of councillor Jones? I thought she made some really excellent points, and in the interest of brevity, I'll try not to repeat them. So, this motion, it is essential that all parties and councillors support Welsh Government policy on the fire break. Well, no, it isn't. We live in a democracy, and we have every right not to support government policies, just as councillors have the right not to support this administration's policies. We're not a one-party state, and I think a healthy democracy needs constructive criticism of decision-making. I can think of a number of instances in this council where our decision-making as an administration has benefited from the challenge and input of councillors from different parties, different backgrounds, and different viewpoints. And to say that we should all blindly support the government because we're in a pandemic is completely wrong. And to suggest in such a simplistic way that if you criticise a policy, you're somehow opposed to the objective of that policy, i.e. saving lives, is really abhorrent. If the fire break was so successful, why did it end? If the policy is to save lives, why don't we just stay in the early round until everyone's been vaccinated? That would certainly save lives. But of course, Welsh Government is aware of the wider societal, economic, and public health damage that lockdowns inflict, and they're trying to tread a really fine line. And we're very aware that there are no risk-free options here. So we do, we do respect the difficult situation that Welsh Governments are in. It's not easy for any politicians to try and navigate this pandemic. There are really difficult decisions to be made, but sadly, the fire break wasn't the success that the Welsh Government thought it would be. Retail, hospitality businesses, all of us were told that we would have a short, sharp intervention in October to reduce the R rate to below one, and that would be sufficient to get us all through to Christmas. We could enjoy the pre-Christmas build-up, businesses could maximise trade during that time, and then we would probably have another lockdown after Christmas to make up for it. Now, businesses, having already made massive investments to make themselves COVID secure, will have made further investments to be able to maximise on potential trade throughout December, and then at the 11th hour, they get shut down indefinitely. In Usk, there's a gin distillery, they're allowed to open under these new rules, but they can't sell alcohol. They can't even sell a single glass of mulled wine with a mince pie in the afternoon, and to add insult to injury, they can't even apply for any financial support until next year. These are draconian regulations resulting from the failure of the fire break. Here in Monmishaw, test and trace report that fewer than 1% of positive cases are associated with the hospitality industry. Indeed, the Welsh Government's own technical advisory group concluded that the closure of hospitality would have a minimal effect on the rate of transmission. Now, as I say, governments need to tread that fine line and ensure that restrictions are proportionate, or they will lose public support for regulations. We're already seeing the damage that a more draconian approach in Wales is delivering. There's been a rise in deaths from diabetes, prostate cancer, breast cancer, and bowel cancer. The number of patients presenting at hospital with symptoms of a stroke fell in the last lockdown by 60%, partly due to fear of showing up at hospital. The number of patients in Wales waiting over a year for NHS treatment has risen by over 1,000%. I mean, it's an unbelievable figure. The increase in unemployment during the pandemic to date is 41% in Wales, compared to 18% in England. Now, I appreciate there'll be a number of reasons for this, and not just the decisions made by governments during the pandemic, but one of the reasons will be, as councillor Jones stated, the fact that after 20 years of Labour running the economy, Wales was less resilient going into this pandemic. The CBI has warned of job losses and business closures as a result of the latest announcement, saying that it's devastating for the Welsh hospitality sector, which is already reeling from a damaging cycle of restrictions. The impact of the fire break in terms of mental health, loneliness, negative thoughts about the future, problems accessing mental health services, and the effects of the resulting economic damage are all yet to be fully quantified. But we know that during previous pandemics and previous recessions, there's sadly been a rise in suicide, self-harming, alcoholism, domestic violence, and the effects are disproportionately felt by vulnerable people. The Welsh Government's desire to carve its own path rather than working constructively with the UK Government has led to terrible confusion about what the rules are. And of course, we know that most people in Wales get their news from London. I think the most read papers, most read newspapers in Wales are still the Daily Mail and the Sun. Travel restrictions have also caused confusion. I know that residents in my own ward have found it very bizarre that they can travel to Pontypool, where the rate per 100,000 is almost 800, but they can't travel just a couple of miles across the border to the Forest of Dean, where the rate is 89 and falling. We're one country, we're one United Kingdom, and introducing a hard border between England and Wales was the wrong thing to do. What's of critical importance to this council is that children and young people who are at the lowest risk from the virus, but in many ways have paid the highest cost, can spend as much time as possible in the classroom. And I must pay tribute to our teachers and head teachers for everything they've been doing to achieve this and to maximise school attendance. In conclusion, Madam Chairman, I feel there's a very careful balance to be struck. Of course, we need restrictions to protect the most vulnerable from this virus, and until everyone can be vaccinated. But these restrictions can't be so onerous that the cure is worse than the disease itself. We don't believe that the Welsh Government has achieved that fine balance, and will continue to be a responsible partner, encouraging the public to abide by the laws of the land, informing them what the latest regulations are. But we will stand up for Monmishaw residents and offer challenge to the Welsh Government where appropriate, just as we would expect councillors to offer us challenge on our own policies and decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. I'm going to invite councillor Powell and councillor Howas, councillor Watts, Peter Fox, and then we'll go back to councillor Batruni to sum up. So councillor Powell, next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a very simple mind, and I'm not going to be political about anything, but in my way of thinking, by closing all the pubs and restaurants and everything like that where they get alcohol, it's not going to do any good at all. Because what's happening now is people are going to the off-licenses, the supermarkets, they're buying boxfuls of booze, they're going back home, oh, my mate down the road, we'll go and see him. They're going into each other's houses, whether in small rooms with a lot of them, and they're drinking. Now, that's going to spread that germ far more than if people can go into a restaurant and have a drink with their meal, which will keep a lot of the hospitality places open. And I can't see why they can't see that. And apart from anything else, one of the worst things with spreading this disease is the fact that so many people just will not toe the line and obey the rules. The fire break was good, but it was a little bit too short. But at least then, you could go and have a meal somewhere and have a drink. But this, I feel, is going to be the same. Whatever you do, if you have too many laws and tie people down too much, all they do is rebel. And I think you'll find that if you look at the statistics, it's not the young people, and it's not the hospitality, it's the people that are going from house to house in greater numbers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Howas, next, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And I do apologise to the council for a little bit of a chat in the chat bar there, but I thought somebody may have stepped in and just have some clarity on whether this motion is about a fire break, about a lockdown, because my perspective of fire break and a lockdown are two different things. So I'll give you an example. Cofili has been in lockdown for weeks, weeks before the fire break was introduced. So, I mean, and that's why the chat starts in the chat bar, so I do apologise if it's caused a little bit of chat there, which is healthy. Chairman, I think Sarah has nicked my script, really, she's borrowed it or she's had it, and fair play to Sarah, that you said everything I would want to say. The fire break, for me, was an instrument they used to close off North Wales from Liverpool area, and I understand that for the tourism side of it over the half-term. The fire break, the stats for the fire break, they aren't available. We've got no stats for the fire break, for them, two weeks lockdown, we have no stats at all. So I'd like to see the stats, because I don't think they've got any. And it was then, well, we've had the fire break, but we won't know the outcomes of that for quite some time. For me, without the stats to set the fire break of what the outcomes will be at the start, there's no point in having it. I do believe that every member is sport today, they are passionate, and I think about where we are with this. I do applaud the Welsh Government as well, Chairman, on the way they've done things. I do applaud the English Government, the way they've done things. And there will be lots of inquiries at the end of all this when we get there, there will be lots of investigations of where we went wrong, and we will hopefully come out of this better. Sarah, you're quite right, with our younger generations, they're going to pay for this for many, many years, and we won't be around to see the pain that they're going to have to suffer. And there will be pains, there will be lots of things that we're going to have to suffer within every country within the world to pay for what we've had to endure for the last 12, perhaps the next six months also. So as a council, I will not support this motion because I believe it's not right to support it, because it's not what it's aimed at. And I wish every councillor safety in moving forward now in the next few months. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite councillor Watts. Councillor Watts?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I'll be brief. Just on, really, it was just particularly what piqued my interest here was the accusation that in Sanwyddau, the Welsh Government had created a hard border. And it is true that there was a lack of symmetry in, obviously, the lockdown in England, or the fire break in England, the fire break in Wales, and certainly from the English side, people were kind of obviously frustrated because, you know, Wales had come out before. But you've got to remember that the children were going back and forth, there's 300, I think, 318, I'm sure those stats are probably slightly greater now this year, of Welsh children going over the border to Wiedeen School. And then equally, you know, my stepdaughter, she goes to Chepstow School, Chair. And I'm on that point of Chepstow School. Having experienced both schools really with different children there, I have to say, I have to, you know, it was a, you know, watching my stepdaughter then being in complete lockdown, I remember the children, forgive me, just bear with me this, the children, when we came out of lockdown, called for her, and she said, I don't know what to do. I said, well, what do you mean? She said, well, how do I go out and play with them? She'd literally forgotten how to socialise with children, which I thought was just, you know, for me, it brought it home how shocking it was. So the direction travel I'm going with is, I remember then when she started at Chepstow Comprehensive, it was like a light opening for her. So not only was it a fantastic educational experience, but she started to learn to socialise. And the teachers were aware of that, the support that they had. This is good news for Richard John, really, the support that she had from the teachers, and really, the way that they managed those children through some very difficult times, was, for me, it was humbling, it was extremely impressive. So the hard border didn't exist as such. Yes, it was frustrating, yes, there were kind of complications. The biggest moan I had during this kind of time was effectively from local businesses, where effectively the Welsh Government payment, which was being funded through from Monmishaw County Council, simply, I think, through weeks... County Council, simply, I think through weeks in, only twenty percent of the businesses had been paid from that first tranche. People were frustrated by that and understandably. But other than that, we didn't, you know, when we talk about schools in general, we kept those schools open. And I think that under the circumstances, to be fair, and I can only speak for Malmesher, Malmesher Schools did an excellent job. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to invite councillor Fox to speak now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no need for anybody to be political on this. This has been one of the most horrific times that any, well, the country, the world has had to deal with. I know that I've worked closely with all leaders across Wales, right from the start in March, every day we met and with ministers. And we built actually a really strong working relationship amongst all leaders in Wales and Wales Government Ministers. In fact, we meet every week even now with ministers. And we do get into constructive challenge, and it's right we do so because we have different perspectives, but we're all aligned with one goal of trying to do the very best we can to keep people safe within our communities. And everybody strives for that. People have different perspectives of how that might be done. I mean, I had grave concerns when the fire break was introduced, and I wrote to the First Minister and explained my position. However, that was the ruling he put down, and it's a duty, there's a duty on us to make sure those rules are adhered to, and we encourage our community to do so. I think Sarah shared some messages there, which I think resonate with all of us. And all of us need to sit and listen to those, and it'd be worth playing back and listening to those points once again, because I think she captured it so well, the concerns that we all have. I'm, well, I'm not struggling to understand, I suppose I do understand why Dimitris brought this motion forward, but, you know, given that this fire break ended a month ago, and we currently find ourselves in a series of national measures which were intended to take us through to Christmas, but we know none of those have really worked, haven't worked really well enough. And tomorrow, we're going to see these really devastating and draconian measures leveled across the hospitality sector in Wales. And I know Mark Drakeford's a good man, and I know he wants to do the right thing, but I just do think with this, he's misjudged this and he hasn't played it right. And I know this comparison between the current situation and tier three in England, and yes, that's a fair comparison, but at least there are tiers in England where there is an opportunity so you don't actually have to hit every part of the country in the same way. So I think some of these interventions we're seeing at the moment, and the way that perhaps they haven't worked as was hoped, you know, don't give a lot of confidence in the Welsh Government's policy direction currently. And I suppose for this latest side of things, in the face of the data which Richard just shared now, that, you know, in Malmesher, our track and trace demonstrate that the data shows rather that less than one percent of cases that we've found have been associated with the hospitality sector. So, you know, it's difficult then to support the direction of Wales Government as it moves forward, let alone looking back retrospectively at one of their last policies. So, but as I said earlier, you know, any laws and regulations which get put in place in Wales, we will, as a responsible authority, make sure that we play our part in helping our citizens stick to those laws and do the right thing. We don't necessarily have to agree with them all the time. And my position has been consistent right throughout, and I've shared it with the First Minister and many ministers, you know, that I'm comfortable to support their policy direction in dealing with coronavirus, where it is seen as being in the best interests of the residents of Malmesher and Wales more generally. And this may include a fire break policy or indeed other interventions, but provided they're supported by scientific and medical advice and are proportionate and mindful of the wider well-being of our communities and our economy. And it's really important, those last points. So often I keep hearing things on social media, oh, Utor is always putting the economy above lives, that's absolutely rubbish. It's not the case. All of these things are intrinsically linked, and we cannot disregard any element of them. This is a challenge that no country has had to face before, and I feel for any leader of a country trying to find their way through this situation. But sometimes not everybody will get it right. And it is appropriate that we can challenge the position or put forward different alternatives. This isn't a time for politics, and I'm not going to make political points around this. This is about saving as many lives as we can, helping our communities to stay safe, and hopefully working toward a brighter future. And let's just hope that can come in the very near future. But I think my position is clear in what I just shared about what I'm looking for out of policy direction. So at the moment, I'm afraid my position is very much, I think is clear, and I can't support the motion as Dimitris put it, sorry.
Mute, right. Councillor Duffey, I did indicate earlier that we were going to go back to councillor Petroni at this point. You've raised your hand, you want to make a very quick point? Good, I appreciate earlier you put something in the chat bar, I just wondered if you wanted to clarify that. No? Councillor Guppy? Perhaps she's having connectivity problems. Councillor Petroni, can I invite you to sum up then, please?
Sorry, Chair, I have difficulties, I thought you said councillor Duffey, not councillor Guppy. Yeah, I hear what's been said, and I'm sitting here and my blood is boiling because the minister put us in fire break because of the pressures on the hospital. Yes, I know the businesses are suffering greatly, but I think you need to all go back to the news releases about the pressures on intensive care. Yes, Malmesher has a lower case of infection and the R rate, but our connection with health is in the Greater Gwent authorities. Our new hospital within the region possibly didn't go ahead and open because of infections within the regions, okay? That meant Malmesher clients, Malmesher people would have not got the tier three support and healthcare because of this virus. I think you all need to go back and look at the demands in our hospitals, just the day-to-day functioning with PPE, it's horrendous. I've worked in intensive care, I've worked in children's intensive care, and now I'm working in the community. And I think you're overstepping what you're putting as a priority. Health has got to come first. The children within our community are being well supported by our teachers, although I would like the teachers to receive extra training on bereavement and welfare issues to support their clients. That is definitely a miss in their training so far. So I just wanted to say that, yes, our businesses do matter, but unless we get our health issues sorted out with this COVID nineteen, we've got immunizations coming up, that is going to be a huge step. And I hope Malmesher helps out with that, and that's all I've got to say. And I'm sorry, some of the points, all you're making is political. Just step back and look at what's happening within our hospitals. Thank you, Chair.
Madam Chair, Dimitri Petroni seems to be sharing his screen, could he remove that, please?
Thank you, councillor Guppy. Did you just want to put your camera on for a moment? So people can recognize who was speaking? Yes, it's not a very good connection, is it? You appear to be muted at the moment. I appreciate, sorry, you are still muted. I appreciate you finished speaking, but I just wanted to make sure that people were aware who was speaking, because unfortunately, there was a presentation on the screen as you were speaking.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, my mute button is very, very sensitive.
Yes, I can see your connectivity is not too good today. Thank you, councillor Guppy. Right. Councillor Petroni, would you like to sum up now, please?
I would, Chair, and I apologize for, I must have clicked it preemptively. I don't know if you can see what I was sharing, or if you can't. It's called evidence, and it's painful. Yes, I'm an elected Labour politician, but actually...
Councillor Petroni, we need to be able to see you, so I'm afraid you'll have to take that.
Okay, well, you're not allowed to share on a democratic elected thing, okay. That was a piece of evidence that everyone was crying for, from the OECD, from professors of epidemiology, and that councillor Sarah Jones, councillor Peter Fox, councillor Richard John were crying for, which showed the harder you lock down, and this is cross countries, these are professors by the way, the more lives you save. And coincidentally, or not actually, because it was causal, the better you protected the economy. And that's the key bit of evidence. These are professors published in The Lancet, the foremost British medical journal. The harder you control on the virus, the more you save the economy. And that's just evidence, it's just facts. It's not Labour, it's not Conservative, it's not Liberal, it's not nothing, it's just facts. Councillor Jones about young people, yeah, the virus is evil. But it just popped up on my phone, sixty thousand people have just passed away, breaking news. These are children losing their parents, their grandparents, people that are irreplaceable, who can never get back. And I hear councillor Powell about anecdotal evidence. Please, guys, please, it's about follow the data and the analysis, please, not your personal feelings or ideology. The data shows you control the virus, you better protect the economy. If anything, the Welsh Government wasn't hard enough, if that's my criticism, should have gone harder earlier, they would have saved the economy more and saved more lives. Same data with the UK Government. Look at New Zealand, look at South Korea as evidence. Follow the science. I talked councillor Fox, he's the leader of this council, people are going to die, suffocate to death, because you have a different perspective. Well, you don't have a different perspective on facts. I don't, no one doesn't, Boris Johnson doesn't, he's following the same scientists. You talk about Wales being comparable to tier three in England, and there's other tiers in England. Yes, but England is fifty-five million people, you made that point earlier, and Wales is three million. I can't believe you don't support things that save people's lives from not suffocating to death. It's pathetic.
Madam Chair, and I think that's bang out of order. I think councillor Petroni should withdraw that. All of us in this council have worked absolutely solidly to try and protect people's lives in this county. And I absolutely, I disagree with what councillor Petroni is saying, he needs to withdraw those statements.
I don't withdraw it by not backing the fire break. People, more people will die. I don't withdraw it.
All in behaviour, that's all in behaviour.
Go to the vote now, thank you. Members, can you vote on this motion, please? Thank you, members, that motion is lost. We'll move on to the next motion, and that's councillor Petroni again. Your next motion, please, councillor Petroni.
Try again on this one, Madam Chair. I can't, I don't precisely remember, but it was maybe two, three years ago, possibly now, I proposed a similar motion, where basically we introduced, as given by the Welsh Government powers, to increase council tax on second homes in the county that have been left vacant for six months, barring exceptional circumstances, i.e. family death, legal arguments, which is a well, it's all home policy if people want to look into it. And there was the kickback, I think the rejection from councillor Murphy, if I remember correctly, and I'm sure he'll correct me, was in effect, there was a loophole, and that some people started flipping their business, their homes to a business. He'll correct me, but I think that was the argument. And so other councils carried on anyway. They didn't follow the ideology of conservatism and protect the rich, and decided to carry on and thought their communities were more important to save. Because actually, this policy protects rural communities more than any community. It probably doesn't really affect my community, but this affects rural communities all across Malmesher, where it hollows out those communities. People buy second homes, and why not? Because Malmesher's a stunning, beautiful county, they work in the city, they buy in Malmesher, who knows, but they spend maybe a month, two months. And officers looked at it, and they said, best case, and it was, it was best case scenario, it would bring in two hundred thousand. And there was a worst case where, I'm sure councillor Murphy will correct me, but it was bringing next to nothing. But there was more about, it's more than the money. So we could bring some money in, which would be great, but it's more about protecting our communities and making sure they remain communities. And I think councillor Murphy during his speech at that time, I'm trying to go on memory again, was that it hadn't been taken up in anywhere in Wales, and when it had, it hadn't proven successful. Well, Pembrokeshire have done it, and it had proven really successful, to the extent where they introduced it. And to be clear, this is where politics does matter, and I'm being blatantly political, a rainbow coalition of independents, Labour, Plaid, and the Liberal Democrats took control from the Conservatives, because they would never endorse such a equality measure, and introduced this measure. And it was so successful that they brought in enough money to build enough affordable housing in parts of Pembrokeshire. And you know how to take my word for it, it's in the BBC News, that it was that successful, that this innovative policy, that they built affordable homes for local people in rural areas, partially funded by this policy. And when I saw that BBC News article, I think it was in the summer, I just got angry and upset, because Malmesher, Peter Fox backslaps himself and all the cabinet members about how innovative they are, I don't think they even know the meaning of the word. I proposed this two and a half, three years ago, we could have been at the forefront, that could have been us, delivering more affordable homes, which we've never hit in any year, because this council just fails and fails and fails to deliver for people who struggle. And Pembrokeshire did it, brought in money, built homes for local people, and it's as simple as that. And I proposed, I thought, let's do it again, let's try them again, and let's give it a go. Let's put it down. If councillor Murphy is right, and if councillor Fox are right, and we see all these people flipping, then let's look at solutions or abandon the policy. But let's give it a go, because it could bring in money, and it could save, which we desperately need during these times, and it could save so many rural communities in this council from people basically buying in house. And if people are that rich, that they can buy a second home in Malmesher, and they can pay the extra hundred and fifty percent, then great, because then we can pay and put more into our local services, then great. If it puts off people buying second homes in Malmesher, then great. I don't see the lose in this. And this is my second attempt at imploring the council and the Peter Fox for once to do something innovative.
Okay, do you have a second if your motion, is that you councillor Thomas, Judith Thomas?
Yes, yes, it is. Yeah, thank you, Chair, I do second the motion, and I just want to speak very briefly in support of it. You know, in reality, second homes add nothing to the local communities that they're based in, that are no children going to school, there is no one living there permanently to sort of... There are no children going to school, there is no one living there permanently to sort of contribute to the local community. And we're always talking about building strong communities. If for 11 months of the year, a second homeowner is in London or Birmingham or wherever, then they can't add to the community. They fly in for weekends, they fly in for the summer, and then they go back, and the house is left empty. You go up to the Llantoni Valley, and there are a number of properties there, and corporate bankers, solicitors, et cetera, who can afford to do it. In reality, as Dimitri said, if you can afford a second home, most of us, I would say, most people in Monmouthshire struggle to have, pay for their own home. Listening to the housing officer the other day, there are so many people who haven't got that luxury to have a home, let alone a second home. And that does concern me, and particularly in rural areas where second homes outprice the local community. So I, you know, I very much speak in support of that. If they can afford a second home, they have the means to do that. But they also have the means to pay the extra council tax. And certainly, if you look at West Wales, Pembrokeshire has been outlined, but also in Anis Môn in North Wales, where communities have been devastated. If you go into Gwynnedd, you go to Aberystwyth, where there are more people from England with second homes there than the indigenous population. So I think we need to bring this in. It could be brought into good effect. It could have some effect on the housing shortage, which is appalling in Monmouthshire. And if you haven't got your house in Monmouthshire at the moment, then you are going to struggle. So I very much support this motion and commend it to the members here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got no other names in the chat bar. Is that possibly because people are struggling to find the raised hands? Let's see if we can put on the screen. Did you wish to speak?
Can I respond, please, Chair?
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, I'm not sure whether this is the second time. I've got a feeling it's come up several times. It might be the second motion on it. I think it's probably the third or fourth time. But the key aspect here is that this motion is asked for a council tax increase on second homes, specifically to those that are left vacant for over six months. So let's start from the false premise that all second homes that we have registered for council tax are empty for six months. As previous modeling shows, the scenarios run the risks and assumptions, and they can lead to varying levels of additional income or in fact costs to the council, not to mention the administrative burden that comes with this. From my intersection, 151 officers' perspective, I would not be looking to endorse a policy change that resulted in a further risk of cost pressures to the council. Beyond this, I make the following observations. The original modeling by officers last January identified 160 second homes, far fewer than some of the authorities that have been mentioned, where vastly greater numbers may have quite a considerable difference on the situation. Most recent records, there's 203 second homes in Monmouthshire, which is broadly consistent on the modest increases you'll see. There are clearly risks associated with such a policy, such as evidence from other councils who have implemented such a premium, and it identified that such second homes were in fact occupied as a person's sole or main residence, on which no premium is chargeable. People can elect which is their principal private residence for tax purposes, and they do it for council tax purposes as well. So would there be an increase in owners refusing or unable to pay the premium? Evidence suggests that those authorities that have implemented a premium, there is a significant burden, both in terms of complaints and administration. Would there be an increase in council tax premium avoidance, e.g. transfer into business rates? Evidence shows this to be the case, and therefore there is a further reduction in council tax income. The shift has ranged from between 5% and 20%, depending on which authority you look at. I am aware that in England, there is a consultation going on with a view to stopping this loophole. But as far as I'm aware, there's no such plans in Wales. In any event, there's a 12-month leading period, so even if there was a financial advantage, any possible advantage could only be effective in 2022, 23, as the provisional tax base calculations have already gone to Welsh Government because of the timing of how we are required to submit. So the motion is proposing to only target those second homes which remain empty for greater than six months. How would we administer and police this? What would satisfy the second homeowner from declaring their home as being empty for more than six months? And how could we prove that? The number of second homes in Monmouthshire doesn't justify the investment needed to administer such a scheme, where there's such an associated risk around further net income being generated. So given the issues that I've outlined, there's no way that I or this administration can support this motion. Indeed, if we're looking at tertiary matters, there is a formal process for that coming up in the next month or so. Motions, in my opinion, are not the way to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Watkins, you're next, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll be quite brief about this. I've actually spoken to my colleague down in Pembrokeshire, who is in the Cabinet, about this very topic, and he has said how incredibly well it has worked in Pembrokeshire. So I really would like the council to consider it, maybe not this very precise way that Dimitri has phrased it in terms of the six months limit, but is there some way we could actually find to actually look at this issue? And whether we could actually find the Monmouthshire way of dealing with it? Because I really think it's an important area that we shouldn't neglect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jordan, next, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What we're talking about here is empty properties. If we're looking at other areas, Newport Torvain and Blaine Gwent, as at January of this year, 2,464 empty properties. Ronan Cullen Taff and Cefiliad, 3,137 empty properties. If you take the trouble to refer to the Welsh Assembly report on empty properties dated October 2019, there's no enthusiasm for this, for the suggestion of increased taxes. In fact, there's no evidence to support the contention that increase in taxes increases property stock. Not really wanting to contradict councillor Petroni very much, but certainly, so far as Pembrokeshire is concerned, the monies that were raised by the additional taxation there didn't go for the provision of additional housing. It went to projects such as, and I'll read them out now, Little Haven Bowlers Club, Pembroke Town Walls, Lambeth Play Area, Nevin Church bells enhancement, et cetera, et cetera. Didn't improve housing stock, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Nobody else has indicated they wish to speak, so would you like to sum up, councillor Petroni?
Without questioning councillor Jordan's research, it was a leading article in the BBC. So it wasn't even me who come up with that. It was then presumably from a press release from Pembrokeshire Council itself, and confirmed by Joanne Watkins, who knows someone in the Cabinet. But poor Jordan Googling is the key research method we need to use, which doesn't surprise me, given that's how we develop our fire break policy and climate change policy. Chair, I didn't expect them to do the progressive thing. You need to get rid of a Tory council. You need the progressives to take control, for the rich to be taxed properly and to save communities. I expect you guys to reject it. I tried.
Right, can we have the voting app now, please?
I'm muted, Sheila.
Sorry, I just said the voting app is in the chat bar. If you'd like to cast your votes, members, please. Thank you. That motion has been lost, so we'll move on to the next one, which is from councillor Watts. Would you like to present your motion, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you for allowing me to bring this motion. The reason, I think, I apologize to all local members, certainly in the south, who have viewed these arguments many, many times over many, many years. But as you know, in 2000, Chepstow was presented with a PFI hospital, a wonderful facility for the community, which in my view has been massively underused. I guess what we saw, I think it was 2011, was the beginning of the erosion of services. And it was a significant one, because we lost the minor injuries unit. And it was done on the argument that there was a reduction in footfall, but effectively, an Aranbevan Health Board run the services down. So after hours, you know, when most people are enjoying their leisure time, effectively, they decided that they were going to close it, and then present an argument that that effectively people, the community, weren't using it. So that warranted a decision where it meant that the people of Chepstow, Coldecock, Maggill and the then had to effectively go down to the Gwent Hospital. Now, for people in Chepstow, either side, whether it's the Welsh side or the English side, that's a 19-mile journey. That's the furthest point to travel of that specific service across Gwent. So, you know, for us, it was a great loss. So really, I think what's happened over the last couple of years is we've seen a huge change in the way that we've approached then our demographic, our housing. We've got a new LDP, we've had the, obviously, the reduction of the Severn Bridge toll, which has brought in many, many hundreds of people, certainly into Chepstow from Bristol. We've seen then the development then obviously come about on the shipyard site. And then obviously, we've seen more recently then the announcement from the English side over at the Beachley Camp of 800 houses, Chair. That's a huge amount of increase in population. Now, we've had to adjust then our LDP again. On the 2011 census figures, we were told that we would anticipate an 11, sorry, a 7% increase. That's based on 2011. Now, since then, I can't, I didn't get a chance then to speak to anybody in the planning department, but we know quite confidently, talking to local agents, that we anticipate a huge increase in population. So when I saw then Aranbevan reconfigure their service to obviously make us aware then that they really wanted to roll out that service back into the community, I saw this as an opportunity to bring this subject up again. I say this with respect, it's been covered by all of my colleagues, and very well so, Paul Pavey in the past, councillor Dovey, and Chepstow town councillor, and Dave Evans, and Jim Higginson, and Tom Easton. We've all covered this issue. And I was hoping that this might be one of those issues, if I might, Chair, that might unite us just before Christmas. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just wondering who's going to second this motion, because councillor Petroni put his hand up in the.
Yeah, that's seconding the motion, Chair.
Councillor Easton has also indicated he wants to second it, so.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Councillor Easton can second it. Are you calling me to speak?
Yes, if you're going to second.
Councillor Petroni, carry on.
Okay, well, councillor Petroni.
Too many seconders, that's the problem. Councillor Watts is spot on, and since I was elected in Bulwark, St Christopher's in Chepstow, it's been one of the topics of conversation amongst many residents, actually across Chepstow. And, you know, building on the theme about politics and doing the right thing, you know, we need a minor injuries unit in Chepstow. It makes sense, it makes complete sense to ease the pressure away from A&E and get people treated locally where they want to get treated for injuries that are not critical. Because then people who are critical get the tension they need rightly. And people who have just got minor injuries can stay closer to the community, who don't have to go to A&E, which is not the best environment. Thankfully, Welsh Government have built a brand new hospital. And it just makes complete sense. People want it. It makes medical sense in my mind. And it actually fulfills the policy, which is to keep treatment as close as possible to the community, which is actually a goal set out in numerous policies. So I completely support this, Chair. It makes sense on any level you can view it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I just want to point out that councillor Guppy has declared an interest in the chat bar, a non-prejudice interest. Prejudice, I can't say it, prejudicial interest. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you very much. Next person to speak is councillor Fox.
No, no, sorry. Oh, sorry, was I going to reply to it? I think, I think it was supposed to meet me. I'm muted.
Late on, surely, Chair.
Okay, yeah, fine, fine, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was talking to myself. Right. I can bring you in, councillor Jones, after councillor Fox, if you like.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Madam Chairman. And thanks, Armand. In fairness, I think, you know, I appreciate the way you brought this motion forward. That is, you know, it's a good motion. And I share with you the congratulations to the health board of the New Grange Hospital, wonderful facility. We're blessed to have that sort of investment in our midst. I hope it all works well as it rolls out and the other hospitals operate in their different ways. And we, you know, we wish them well on that. And I remember their decisions. I remember this being talked about 10, 12 years ago in Clinical Futures, first started, when there was talk about the realignment of local services. And I was always anxious, as all of you Chepstow members have been, I know about it, leaving the hospital. It's a little jewel in the crown, that hospital is in Chepstow, something we all value, and it could do so much more. And I know some of the cases at the time were about how do we actually, how can they staff it with, you know, with the right type of clinicians there at the right level, and they couldn't justify it and all of those things. But I think, you know, in fairness, the cases that Armand's made about the growing population in the area, you know, there is an opportunity here for them to think again around how can they use that provision better for our community. So, yeah, I'm more than happy to stand right behind you, Armand, on this one, and I'll be supporting your motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to invite councillor Brown. And now I see that councillor Jones has raised her hand in the chat box. It's all in order now. So councillor Brown, next, please.
Yeah, sorry, I don't mind if councillor Penny Jones wants to go before me, if she wanted to at any point, so.
This is what I will take in sequence in the chat. It's just I don't think she could.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just want to say, I do, as a member who covers a ward near Chepstow, fully support the idea of a minor injuries unit, not just an idea, because obviously we want to see that in practice. I mean, there was one obviously before, and a lot of people weren't happy about the fact that it was actually closed. And I think it is a good time to raise this issue again. I did actually raise it myself in Rodney Parade when the Health Board had a community engagement event. And, you know, followed this up by emails at the end of this year. And I got a hint that there may be something to be locked out there, but I didn't pursue. Apologies on the phone. I didn't pursue this because of the fact of COVID taking over all the health particular issues. But it is something that I would like to see, and I would like to see actually a nurse-led minor injuries unit. Because in Lydney, they've got a nurse-led minor injuries unit, and they've also got a radiographer there as well. And I think Lydney is a much smaller town than Chepstow is, and Chepstow and surrounding area is very growing at the moment. And I think there is a good case to say that we do actually need one here. So I welcome this motion, and I'm sure it's the same for other Chepstow members. Thank you.
Councillor Easton? You're on mute.
I can't unmute.
You are off mute.
It tells me, right, I'm off mute now. My screen is switching on and off, and I don't know why. Yes, over the years, we've been discussing this matter with Chepstow Hospital. We've lost everything from the, from that hospital, when we first, first of all, lost the burns unit, then we lost the A and E, then we got the MIU, and we've lost the MIU. Partly at the end, it was mainly down to, as Anarim Bevan Health Board said, was the resources and getting the resources there, that is staffing, in other words. So it's left us now in the south-east of Wales with a very empty hospital. It does provide services for physiotherapy, it does x-rays, which I think is fairly good because you can get one pretty quickly, but we need to try and raise the profile again of the hospital. We're drawing a line from Abercogony down to Newport, we'll leave over 500 hours of MIU services to the west of that line, but none to the east of the line. This motion is really put to council to try to seek to redress the situation that the ABUHB had put us in, and possibly find ways to re-provide, re-provision MIU services at Chepstow. The Grange, as I said, the Grange Hospital is, we've applauded the ABUHB to get the Grange on board and build it and open it, but it's now been opened clearly with staff redeployments, but those staff redeployments have maintained the services to the west of that line from Newport to Abercogony, other than for Ebbeville Hospital, which only gets, which gets 50 hours a week. So I believe that this council should push forward, the Anarim Bevan Health Board, and seek to find some ways of redressing that question of bringing some MIU back to Chepstow. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Pavey, next.
Thanks, Chair. Can I thank councillor Watts for bringing this forward? He's absolutely right. All the local elected councillors, whether it be county councillors or town councillors, have pledged themselves to the community to try and get this dreadful decision overturned. You know, again, as councillor Watts said, rightly said in his motion, we welcome the implementation of the Grange. No one is arguing that, you know, specialist acute emergency and plan care should be centralised, where you have the best staff in place to undertake that surgery, whether that's neurosurgery, whether that's cardiothorax surgery, and it might not even be in the Grange, it could be Cardiff. And no one's, no one's disagreeing with that. And certainly, no one's disagreeing with seeing more multidisciplinary teams being cited at Chepstow Hospital, collaborating with social care, working on things like re-ablement and step-down provision to assess, that's absolutely right, you know, no one's disagreeing with that. But, you know, myself and councillor Watts and others have put in FOI requests and we've our information back, and we've seen the clinical decline of services in, in Chepstow Hospital, despite commitments by the chief exec and the chair of the Health Board saying, well, you know, we will look at potentially a cancer outreach service from Valindra there, and we will look at other areas like dialysis, renal dialysis, which could be an important area that could be cited at the hospital, yet, you know, no progress has been made. And I challenged one of the directors, who is a constituent of mine, Nick Wood, a senior director at the Health Board, I think one of the last adult sessions that had, that took evidence from the Health Board at the time about provision of the minor injuries unit, you know, we've got x-ray facilities there, why can't we have a minor injuries unit, whether that's clinician-led or whether that's nurse-led, it doesn't matter. And the outright refusal to reopen or to relook at this is what's really disappointing for me. And I think Mr. Wood's sort of comeback and explanation was, well, we have approached local GP services to see whether or not they would facilitate some minor injuries provision within their practice. So I asked a supplementary question, how advanced did these discussions have been? And they hadn't, they hadn't spoken to the, they hadn't spoken to the practices. So, you know, all right, if we can have a minor injuries unit there, then at least upskill and allow GP surgeries to take on that provision. But my preference would be to utilise the full capacity of the hospital, because as councillor Watts has said, you know, it's a relatively new facility, and it's really being underutilised. So can I thank councillor Watts for bringing it forward, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Jones, councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Well, councillor Watts, this may, your wishes may come true today. We may yet be united on this. Thank you for bringing... Well, the ones you've talked about so far. Thank you for bringing this motion to council. As you so rightly say, this council must congratulate ABUHB for its opening ahead of schedule of the Grange University Hospital. On a recent visit prior to the opening, I was amazed by its state-of-the-art technology and its thoughtful approach to, to all the staff and the care and wellbeing of the patients as well. We are very lucky in Monmouthshire to have this variety of hospital and also the range of specialisms. But the second part of your motion, you asked for Monmouthshire County Council to call on ABUHB to reintroduce the minor injuries unit to Chepstow Community Hospital. And it's sad that it has gone, and I do agree, that and Monmouth were two very, very welcome and community minor injuries units. So in reply to councillor Brown, who contacted me, Judith Paget had said, the CEO of Anarim Bevan, has stated that Health Board Planning Team were going to do a review of minor injuries in light of potential changes over the border, which of course, you know, has a great effect on it. Unfortunately, this did not lead to the reopening, and today, today, I received an email from Nick Wood, executive director of Primary Community and Mental Health Services, who I'd contacted yesterday to get an update on the situation in light of that, of Judith Paget's comments. Unfortunately, I will read the statement out to you, this is, this is what he said. "In line with Anarim Bevan Clinical Futures Strategy, we have, we have recently opened our specialist and critical care centre at the Grange University Hospital, which encompasses one of our major emergency departments. The strategy involved the maintenance of minor injuries units at Royal Gwent and Neville Hall. The Health Board has also initiated as urgent primary care centres at both of these sites to support patients who are seeking urgent care and treatment for minor ailments. The Health Board consulted widely on these changes and will not, not be revisiting the decision made on the minor injuries units at Chepstow Community Hospital." I did reply that it was extremely disappointing. I realise it's not what you or anybody really wants to hear, and I think we will have, we will keep trying, I don't think, we will keep trying and bringing this up, and I'm going to ask to speak to the CEO, I think, on a face-to-face. Because in light of the increased numbers, as you so rightly point out, and the population increase in Chepstow, I think, you know, there is room for a change of heart. I don't think it'll be urgent or imminent in light of all the, the opening of the new hospital, but I'd like it to be on the horizon at least. So if we could just get it a talking point again, I think that would be a step forward. But I do agree with your motion, and thank you for bringing it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Webb, next.
Yes, thank you, Armand, for bringing this to our attention again, and I feel I must speak on this because this involves a lot of the residents in my ward and along the Wye Valley. I think that the word consultation to the Health Board is, has a different meaning to all of us, actually. And I take on board what Penny has said, but when you think of it, to travel to those locations that she's listed, it's a jolly long way if there's an emergency, and the facilities that were previously at Chepstow Hospital were absolutely brilliant. And I'm just wondering if all the facilities are still there, because there was a huge amount of money spent on, on all the instruments and stuff that they had there, and I just hope that it still remains there, just in case, Armand, that we do win here. Thank you very much indeed for bringing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, next.
Thank you, Chair. I would, as you know, I used to be a member of Anarim Bevan Health Board, and I have to say that I do believe that the Clinical Futures Strategy has changed since its inception. And whilst, I think, to be perfectly honest with you, the explanation about why, for example, minor injuries units go or stay, I don't think the case has been made, so that even if, you know, I think, I think to a certain degree, if one can understand the rationale, one can start to at least accept it. But I think there is certainly a sense that that's not really well understood, and as you quite rightly say, there have been changes over the border. And my understanding was that that was part of the way in which, you know, the, so when, when the wards were, the wards were changed, there was a reconfiguration of service. Our understanding was that Chepstow Hospital would be developed as this kind of, you know, community primary care hub, if you like, encompassing a whole range of services, because the fact of the matter is, we want to keep people well, it's a wellbeing centre as opposed to, and I fully appreciate that everybody's attention has been on Covid, but actually, our attention needs to be on developing that wellbeing centre. So whilst a minor injury unit may not be possible, what, what are, what is the progress to this wellbeing hub? I don't know, and I suspect other elected members don't know either, and I think that if councillor Jones is going to try and facilitate a face-to-face meeting with, with the chief executive of the Health Board and the chair probably, then that actually would be something that might be really helpful to, you know, we planned pre-Covid, a workshop with the Health Board and elected members to try and understand the processes, the strategy, the whys and wherefores, so that if we can understand why something's not possible, then we can at least work together on providing an alternative. Because frankly, you know, the services at the Grange are intended to be an emergency department, and, and, you know, that is what they are intended to be. But actually, the provision of the minor injury units elsewhere, to a certain extent, you know, the jury's out on whether they will fulfil the, you know, what they're intended for, i.e. so emergencies go to the critical care unit, and there is a lot of good evidence that if it is an emergency, you know, and that kind of really specialist care that councillor Pavey described is required, that actually, even if you have to travel a little further, then your outcomes are better if you're in a specialist unit. So I think we would all, we all understand and support that philosophy. But nevertheless, there is, you know, and there is a need to treat people or triage people who have minor ailments, who want to remain well in their community, and I'm not sure that our models really speak to that at the moment. So I support councillor Watts in his intention, absolutely, to try and bring this to the fore, and I, what I really would welcome is that workshop, councillor Jones, with the Health Board, so that members can explore how we can work together to promote first-class wellbeing service for the residents that we have here, and we know we have a growing population, and our, our intention is to keep them well and healthy, but we cannot do that without cooperation from the Health Board. And I too think that the Health Board, and I, you know, I made this point many occasions, I'm not speaking out of turn, have a lot to learn in terms of the way they, in brackets, consult and engage with both elected members and communities around changes that they wish to make to services. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Watts, where's summer? Councillor Guppy?
Hi. Although I listen to sort of what is needed as a minor injuries unit, I totally disagree with what's needed. As your councillors say about getting information about treating minor ailments, within most probably every GP within the county, I've got specialist nurses that can treat minor ailments and are very well qualified, and they can triage and give immediate minor ailments treatments. I think what is needed for Chepstow Hospital is it for it to be better used for our communities, for example, more outpatient appointment, better services for children, better service for disabled children. At present, they have to go to Sereni. You try getting to Sereni, which is in Rochester, within Monmouthshire, if not minimum of two buses, or a taxi ride, which is an expense. I don't think we can support, I feel that we cannot support a minor unit, but because we have not got the specialities that need, that people will end up bringing to that unit, specialist paediatric services, that there is, it will be diluted, and there is not enough healthcare workers to provide specialist service for the whole communities. I think now, the Royal Gwent is now downgraded to a minor injuries unit, and I think there will be a difference in how people will use it, but we should also be using what's in our communities, we should be using our specialist practice nurses, which is in every GP practice, I believe, if not more than two. Yes, I think Chepstow Hospital should be upgraded and used for a better facility, better outpatient, better community services, but not a minor illness unit. So maybe councillor Watts can think about taking out minor injuries into better facilities within the community. Thank you.
Right, councillor Watts, would you like to sum up now, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I mean, fantastic, I appreciate all the support from my colleagues across the council. It's nice that we all share a common goal, a similar view, but what Linda's final point, really, well, I mean, in part, I agree with it, I won't be taking out the minor injuries unit aspect of it, simply because when we built, when that hospital was built, and it was extensive consultation, endless debate with the community about whether it was the right place, someone, I will go off on one about that, but they, I remember Dr. Jones, who is my doctor, was heavily involved in ensuring that that PFI hospital, which was controversial, you know, effectively done under a Labour government, was brought in. They were absolutely kind of guilt-ed assurances that we would have a community hospital, and part of that was then to facilitate the minor injuries unit of the community. Well, since then, the population has grown and grown and grown, and Linda's right, to some extent, you know, it does need to be used more. There are four wards in that, in that hospital, currently there is one that's being used, and I simply do not understand that at all. It is a modern functioning, high-quality unit, and in its day, like the Grange, was a state-of-the-art hospital. So for me, I think it's frankly wrong that they should just ignore the whole of Monmouthshire, you know, sorry, the whole, the southern part of Monmouthshire, because of the population growth. So I won't labour it too much, Chair, but I thank the support from councillors, and I appreciate that maybe one or two might not vote for it, hopefully more will than won't, but I obviously open that up to the floor for people to vote. Thank you, Chair.
Right, the voting app is in the chat bar, people are voting already, please submit your vote. You won't stay still, I've left me to put my vote in. Here we are, done it. That's clearly carried. Thank you, councillors. We have, at the moment, 28 for, one abstention, one against. Thank you. Right, so we'll move on to the last motion, the county councillor Francis Tate.
Thank you, Members Goodness, really don't submit your motion at the last minute.
Thank you Members. Goodness, really don't submit your motion at the last minute when there are so many other motions on the agenda. Thank you Members. I think, hopefully, the motion does speak for itself. I hope, given many of our conversations this evening, Members, that you feel that you could support this motion. So quite simply, I am asking this council to write to the minister to request that he reconsideres his testing strategy to support the testing of domiciliary care workers. It's truly wonderful news that we have the potential, we have, we have a vaccine being rolled out, but that will take many months to get to the people it needs to get to, when, when sees that it is going to get to the most vulnerable and health and social care staff first, which feels absolutely right. Though I note, Members, that carers, I mean unpaid carers, are not in that banding. So perhaps again, that, that helps you think about the value of care. But I brought my motion, Members, because you will know that currently, carers working in care homes are routinely tested asymptomatic. But conversely, those working in domiciliary care, so going into people's homes, are not. Frankly, I don't see that there's any less risk with going and caring for someone in their own home than caring in a care home. It could be that those with very high support needs, and obviously, we include adults and children and young people in that, could see anything up to 56, 60 carers a week if they, if they have very high care support packages. That's, that's a lot of people coming into your home. And that is the, effectively like going to a couple of weddings a week when that is allowed. It's also true to say that care staff, as has been touched on equally earlier here, are vital but sadly very low-paid and often under-valued part of health and social care workforce. They are also most likely to be women. And in many cases, they do work on restricted hours or zero-hours contracts. Wales hasn't introduced any asymptomatic testing. And I have written to the minister myself on this matter. And I was very disappointed to get a response which suggests that testing is not a panacea. And perhaps it isn't. However, the experience of mass testing, for example, in Liverpool would suggest that it might not be a panacea, but it certainly can play a significant role in reducing infection rates and therefore adverse consequences and deaths. I was equally disappointed that the response I received suggested that there was little evidence to suggest that domiciliary care staff are at any greater risk in contracting and therefore spreading the infection. However, it's my understanding also that there's not been any systematic surveillance of care staff infections to date. And presumably, therefore, there isn't any evidence to suggest that they are or are not at any greater risk. As councillor Betruni said, we have just passed the 60,000 deaths in the UK mark. And I would ask you, Members, to support the motion. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. I was just about to say, I don't see any names going into the, raise your hand, but they're starting to go in now. Okay, so we'll start off with councillor Watts. Oh, sorry. Councillor Howard, you haven't raised your hand, but you've put a comment in the chat bar, I see, about second in the motion.
Yes, that's correct Chair.
Right, okay. So the motion's been seconded to councillor Watts.
Yes Chair, I'm happy to support Frances on this motion. Mass testing isn't the be and end all. We all, we know that. And we will hopefully get to a point where we will no longer ever have to test again. But I can't in the short term foresee that. I think it's, just a couple of weeks ago, about three weeks ago, I was reading the Slovakian government tested 3.6 million people as a country that has 5.4 million people. And they did it on the weekend. They obviously did it in mainly urban areas. And as a consequence of that, they, well, they effectively told people that they had an option. They could get tested or they could go into self-isolation for a fortnight. So effectively, 3.6 million people did get tested. And they found that 1% evidence has been positive with Covid. But what it did do is allow the country to function for a few more weeks. And I thought it was a very kind of practical effort and surely an example of good practice. So I think really, we, we might be, you know, in a position where certainly Wales has got a population of, I think, 3.3 million. We, you know, we could do that. I'm convinced we could do that. If we made an effort, we could probably push that. But I also wanted to give you another example where some of you might remember my councillor Watts, Pauline Watts, lives with me now, effectively, we are Pauline's carer. The district nurse came out to see Pauline, made an appointment. She just rocked up on the door, came to give Pauline a flu jab, and I asked her if she'd been tested. And she hadn't been. So because I also have my partner, who is a carer and does get tested on a weekly basis, I couldn't refuse, I couldn't really allow her to enter the home. But I did have a chat with the manager, I had a chat with her as well. She, she went into about 20, 25 properties a day. That's a lot of people. So, you know, I couldn't really understand the logic of that. So I think Frances has absolutely got it right. I'm happy to support it. I think it's, it's a genuine attempt to improve things and make things better Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Betruni next.
It's so refreshing to see a motion that's based on fact and evidence. Thank you Frances. Totally support this. Do you know what? Putting everything aside, it's just the right thing to do. It's just the right thing to do. Protect those workers, protect the people they look after. And I couldn't support a motion more.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you Chair. And thank you councillor Taylor for bringing this motion before council. I couldn't agree with you more councillor Betruni. I could not agree with you more. Of all the undervalued members of society, it's probably domiciliary carers in the community. As you know, it's something that I, councillor Taylor, as we know, it's something that I, along with my cabinet colleagues throughout Wales, have been requesting at every given opportunity. As I stated previously in a communication with you, I asked the minister directly about the welfare and resilience of domiciliary carers alongside issues regarding their recruitment and their retention. Because it is, you know, they, they are aligned. This was then followed up again in a WLGA, Social Services and Wellbeing Cabinet Members' Network Meeting, attended by the minister, where we all were in agreement about the major concern regarding the non-testing of domiciliary carers in the community. And we've also, in further meetings such as RPB and various boards, this subject is always uppermost in discussion. The reply unfortunately, much like yours, a disappointing one, that there was no real evidence of cross-contamination or spread, and that we must, that the reliance on PPE was enough, they thought essentially. We fervently disagreed with this, but to no avail. I mean, every voice makes a difference. So thankfully, you've raised this and we can, you know, send another letter as from the council as a whole and help, hopefully that will have, goes some way towards changing their minds. Because this undervalues the role that domiciliary carers play in the community by reducing the need to protect them and, and their vulnerable clients. So it's twofold. A further question now arises about the vaccination programme. Where do they sit in that vaccination programme? I cannot find out yet where, where this is, where they come. But it is something that, you know, we will, we will raise and un-ask the minister. So we will be pursuing this. Hopefully, they will be recognised as frontline health and social care workers, and they too will be prioritised. But I can assure you that really, this, I totally agree with your motion, that it is uppermost in our minds, that they have to have somebody championing their cause. And the whole of Wales seems to be doing it, apart from the minister in the Welsh Government. But in the meantime, I think a heartfelt thanks goes from everyone to all the domiciliary carers everywhere in recognition of all that they do to care and protect the vulnerable clients that they have and the vulnerable residents in our county. But I will be supporting your motion Frances. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Howard.
Thank you Chair. And a second councillor Taylor's motion. I'd just like to say a few words really. I fancy myself, I spoke about this on, on quite a few occasions, about dom care within, within Monmouthshire and the wider reaches of Monmouthshire as well. Because what we must remember is, a lot of the key staff who work in dom care in the private sector also, come from the valleys in my region. And they do a wonderful job. I have dom care, people come into mum four times a day, and I know how important it is. But the importance of them as well, they are so worried as well. And we, I know, I know it is evidence-based that they have, they've had people off self-isolating. They're worried themselves, they're not being tested, they are really worried. And our minister can actually just turn a blind eye to this when, when we have, and don't forget as well, is it about money that is not tested? Because if it is, obviously, it costs for people who are at home, having the services that we're giving them to, to, to be lifted in out of bed and all these things. The cost of all that as well is tremendous, to make these people have a quality of life. And we can't do this testing. Because we haven't got dom care workers going in there. Who, who do we have? Where we are, the dom care workers are generally in an age bracket from, I'd say, from probably 18 to 30. They're young people. If they, if they, if they go down with symptoms, they can't afford time off work. They've got to self-isolate. And we all know the generations which it does affect within Covid, Covid, this Covid-19. We know a lot of people aren't self-isolating with symptoms. We know, that's probably how the virus is spreading. So when we have dom care workers and, and they are so lowly paid, I mean, a lot probably won't self-isolate. At the early stage of the pandemic, Madam Chairman, they didn't even have protective gear. They didn't even have masks. So I know family members were giving dom care workers protective gear. That's how poor it's been. And it still hasn't improved to a point. Yes, they've got the gear, but they need to be tested. They need to be tested regular. It ain't going to go away. And thanks Frances, I, you know, we've chatted about this and we are very passionate about this. And the minister needs to get some recognition that there are people out there who, who are so vulnerable. And these are the vulnerable in society. So let's see what we can do with this Penny. And I think, I think, my personal view is, you should set an online petition up and let this get to the assembly. What was it? 5,000 signatures? You'd easily get 5,000 signatures. And let, let the Welsh Government have the debate on this. Because the minister, health minister, needs to wake up. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Fox, and I'll come back to you councillor Taylor to sum up. Councillor Fox.
Off now? Okay, well, thanks. Thanks Frances, thanks for bringing this forward. And you couldn't have brought a stronger motion than this one. And big thanks to Penny and her colleagues right across Wales have been championing this as well. And it's fallen on deaf ears. And I'm disappointed. We've all been, well, many of us have been touched by the work and diligence of domiciliary care. And sadly, I'm sure many more of us will experience it in the future. And, and when you do see how hard they work and how pushed they are and the service they provide, you do really value them. And, you know, we've, we've been there. And so, you know, this is a message which needs to get back to Vaughan Gethin. And I know Dimitri, you're a good friend of Vaughan's. You need to just, just have a word in his ear on this one. Because this is so important. And I, I'm just surprised it's not getting the progress that it needs to have. I'm absolutely going to support you Frances on this one. There's nothing more important on, on today's agenda, I don't think really than this. So I'll leave it there, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Right. Would you like to sum up now councillor Taylor?
Well, I don't think there's anything left to say. Thank you Chair. I do appreciate the support of colleagues. And I do know that members and officers of the council have been making this point for, at any opportunity, any time they can. And I don't say that it will solve the problem. But if this council can write to the minister and make the case very strongly, then who knows? I do, I believe they do routinely review their testing policy. And so it may just prove that correspondence from council might help with that tipping the balance. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. We're just waiting now, Members, for the voting app. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be long. The last one of the afternoon. There it is. Like to submit your vote please.
Madam Chairman, may I say a few words before we leave? I know it's been a long meeting, but I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to be our last meeting before Christmas and...
Yes, of course. I've, we've still got the minister check councillor Howard. I've just, I've just announced the, oh well, everybody can see that's clearly been carried. 27 for. And nobody's voted against or abstained from it. So that's clearly carried. Thank you very much. So we will now check the minutes of the meeting. Does anybody have anything they wish to raise with regard to the minutes from the 22nd of October?
I move the minutes, Madam Chair.
I think there was one comment. Did I have a, did somebody want to make a comment? Was it councillor John mentioned he wanted to raise something?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if you can, if you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I couldn't see how to, how to raise my hand, sorry. Just one very minor point. On page five, second paragraph and item six, the motion about Usk Recycling Centre, talks about the lack of consideration at the cabinet meeting. Could officers just check the wording of that sentence just to ensure they're content? It's clear that that's the opinion of county councillor Grocott expressed there and not, not presented as fact, as we did, we did have a very robust discussion about that. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Grocott isn't here, is he? So we'll ask, we'll ask officers to check that. And if necessary, make the necessary amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, so councillor Fox proposed acceptance.
Can I second that then?
Anybody else want to comment on the minutes at all? I'll take that as assent. Silence is assent. And before we close, I would just like to say thank you all very much to all officers and members for your patience again this afternoon. It's half past six. I really didn't know this morning how long this meeting was going to run for. We've had a lot of business, we've conducted a lot of business. So, and you're all obviously getting more used to the technology. It's, it's, it does place up on times, but I think you can overcome most things now. So I thank you for that. There is a Christmas service on the 16th of December. So I would like to say, wish everybody a happy and peaceful and safe Christmas. And, you know, unless, obviously, it would be nice to see you on the 16th of December. But if not, and especially this year, we have a little respite and look forward to a better year next year. There's a light at the end of the tunnel. And the light is getting brighter. I've heard that a few times. And I think that's good. Councillor Howard, you wanted to make a comment before we close, I understand?
Yes, just following on from you Chair. And I'd just like to thank yourself, the cabinet, chief executive, all the staff, all the members and everyone in Monmouthshire. A healthy new year, hopefully. And you're quite right, there is light at the end of the tunnel. And wish everybody a happy Christmas. Stay safe. And look forward to speaking with you all and... all and looking after Monmouthshire in the next six months. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and thank you, thank you, councillor Howard. And thank you, everybody, once again, and do keep safe and look forward to next year getting back into the chamber, hopefully. Anyway, take care. Bye. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Thanks all, bye.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sheila. Speak soon. Thank you ever so much. Bye-bye.